Hello Vice Mayor.
Good evening Mayor.
How are you doing?
I'm doing good, and yourself?
Not bad. Hello Ben and Laura, how are you?
Doing well Mayor Landman.
Hello.
It's cold out here tonight though.
I was just about to say it's time for one of us to make some comment about sitting in front of City Hall. It wouldn't be a last virtual meeting without that, so.
Still got some good daylight though surprisingly, I guess you're a little farther west than I am.
It's always midday at Catati City Hall.
That's not a bad slogan, I like that. Alright, we're gonna drag our feet just another minute or so and see if we can catch Councilmember Moore, and then we'll be ready to go, I think. Alright, let's see. Well, it is. Let's just wait till about 6:02. Just a couple of minutes for our bench to try and get all our colleagues started, but this at the same time if we can. And if not, we'll get started. And there we go. Alright, so let me ask the City Manager, are we on staffs in, are we ready to go?
Yeah, thank you Mayor, we're ready to go.
Perfect, I hope we don't jinx ourselves with laddy last minute tactical things by saying that, but it sounds good to me. And we have an open mic somewhere too, I'll mention. Hang on just a second. I think it's the council chambers maybe? Yeah, if we could catch that, that would be great. Alright, well welcome everybody, as we called to order this regular joint meeting of the Catati City Council and the successor agency to the former Catati Community Redevelopment Agency. This is for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. And we're gonna jump right to item number two, which is a roll call. And I'll ask our City Clerk, if we can have a roll call, please have council members in attendance.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Landman.
And here, thank you. Next, as always, I'm gonna ask our City Manager, if he could just briefly introduce the members of staff that are here tonight with us.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council, so I have myself, City Manager Damian Obede. We have our City Attorney John Barker here with us tonight. We have our Director of Administrative Services Angela Quarter here. Our Police Chief Michael Parrish. Our Director of Community Development Noah Housh. And our Associate Planner Autumn Bus with us as well. And finally, our Deputy City Clerk Kevin Patterson. That is it Mayor, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, alright, well that jumps us right to item number three, which is our Pledge of Allegiance. And I will invite anybody who would like to join me online, or wherever you are, if they want to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. I suspect this is going to get much easier to do at the next meeting. At least I certainly hope so. Alright everybody, thank you for that. So this brings us now to item four, which is approval of minutes. A notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and orders introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. So I'll begin as always, asking if we have any corrections or additions to the minutes of our regular meeting for October 25th from the council. See if I can see any hands, I'm not seeing anybody at the moment. Alright, so next we'll bring it back and see if we have any public comment on this place.
Thank you Mayor Landman, speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Uh, Mr. Patterson.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted there. You know, speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Alright, well since we've done it, I will bring it back then to see if we have a motion and a second.
Move to approve the minutes?
Alright. This is the way we like to start our meetings, the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Ford getting that, uh, moving it and getting the seconds for a rousing start, alright. So we have a motion and a second, we have a roll call vote please.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
And that's a yes for me as well. Thank you. So this brings us to item five, which is announcements, so I'll ask everyone to bear with me, because I have a few things to read for you. And we'll begin with our meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items. Where the City Council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whichever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. You can see details on the web at catatiscity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Catati Community Alerts by text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or the Android App Store. Or by simply texting your zip code 949312888777. And lastly, like always, we'd love to hear from you, so do please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600. Or you can email us at info@catatiscity.org. Now if you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels, which are available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So let's see, this brings us to item six, which are presentations, we have two presentations tonight. Bear with me just a second. And the first is our General Plan Annual Progress Report, so I'll ask for our staff report, and I'll probably also check in and looking at this in the packet, I will hopefully ask that we're not going to have every single page read to us in the, in the in the slide deck, because we'd probably be here till next year, I think, so. But looking forward to hearing this, thank you.
Uh, thank you Mayor Landman and members of the council, good evening. Yeah, I'm gonna keep my report brief, and then we'll focus on, you know, your questions and comments at the end. So we, we do have this, a report here, this is our annual progress report for three years actually, so it's reports for 2019, 2020, and 2021 on progress made in implementation of our general plan. Next slide please. So as the council knows, the, or most likely knows, our general plan is kind of like our, our big roadmap for the city, it identifies the city's vision for the future and provides a framework for decision makers to, to use in making decisions. Our current general plan was adopted in 2015. And you have seen reports come and go on the housing element for a number of years, that the, the requirement by the state of California to produce an annual progress report on the housing element has been something that goes back quite a ways. This, what we're responding to now is a fairly new requirement by the state that we produce an annual progress report, or APR, for all of the other elements of the general plan, of which there are a number. So the first year that these reports were required was 2019. Essentially, the state views the APR as a, as a tool for the local jurisdiction's own use. So even though we send it to them, it is essentially for us, for you, to use in your decisions. The APR is a status report to inform you and the community about progress towards goals, guide decisions on work plans and budgeting. For example, the formation of the Capital Improvement Program, CIP. So even though we are coming forward to you now with a three-year report, or reports, the, in the future, we'll be submitting these reports annually, and they're based on a calendar year, so in the spring of each year, we'll be submitting the reports. Okay, next slide please. Just to review the, the elements that appear in the general plan, that are, in addition to that the housing element, these include circulation, community health and wellness, community services and facilities, conservation, economic vitality, land use, noise, open space, and safety. So the general plan is very, is very broad and far-reaching, and reaches onto all of the city's activities. Within each element in the plan, there are a number of goals, and within each of those goals, the city has set forth objectives, policies, and actions for implementation. And those are all compiled, all those actions appear in an implementation plan, which is near the end of the general plan document. And we're using the implementation plan as the format for our APR. We, Community Development gathered information from all the different city departments to, to record our progress on various actions in the plan during that three-year period, and and as you can see, it's a lengthy document. Next slide please. So just briefly, there's really two primary types of actions that appear in the general plan. And you'll see those fall into ongoing actions or activities, and that might include services that the city regularly provides, maintenance, maintain partnerships with outside agencies and collaboratives, data collection activities, just a few. There are also project-oriented projects or actions where it's easier to identify the completion date. That could include the capital improvements, new program development, and completion of code and policy updates. Then you may note too, that in the plan, it's clear that some things slowed down a little bit in 20 and 21 due to COVID, when we saw work suspended on a number of programs and resources reallocated in, in some cases. So hopefully we'll be picking back up, and we'll see the impact of that when we review the 2022 report. So the Planning Commission reviewed the report last night, there's, there's no action required here, except that, to receive the report from the staff. Following your review and receipt of the report tonight, we'll be submitting it to the state, to the Office of Planning and Research. Okay, next slide. So it is our recommendation to you from the Community Development Department that you receive a report from staff on the annual progress reports on general plan implementation for 2019, 2020, and 2021. And various staff are here tonight to answer questions that you might have on what we find in the report.
Well, thank you, and thank you, I think a word probably goes tonight for the best ratio of time to the size of the packet for this particular agenda item, yes, exactly, two thumbs up. So with that, let's see if we have any questions from the council on this. And I'm gonna look at both places, because I cannot see you all at the same time tonight, the way your faces are lined up. I mean, not seeing any questions just out, let me ask one, bear with me just a second. And this is a very minor one, but as I'm looking, some of these, one action item jumped out, this is on our packet page 48, it's action CSF 2S, this is for the City Management Police Department. And obviously, this is an older one, it's developed information on neighborhood watch programs, and actively promote such programs. And of course, it mentions that neighborhood watch has evolved to beat officers and go on to explain how we've been doing this and meeting these needs. But I'm curious, what is the process for the timeline of removing this, and I asked this or updating and/or removing ideally, because as I look at the absolute scope of what Community Development had to work through in updating this, it's an amazing amount of work, for anybody in the public that hasn't seen this packet, it is somewhat mind-boggling, so obviously, anything we can do to thin out items that are no longer relevant would at least have some benefit, I think, both for staff and the public when they go through this, so how, how would that work out, is this something we revisit the next time around with this, for a next general plan update, or?
Uh, Mayor Lemon, yeah, that's exactly right, so the, the, the policy to expand the Neighborhood Watch program came out of the, the, the public input process when the plan was adopted in 2015. It seems that, you know, the city has kind of pivoted to address that, the goal of that policy or program through different means, and so it would take a general plan amendment to remove it, but I think, you know, now that we've kind of talked about how we've pivoted, and that could just, that answer could just live in our APR as we continue to just submit them over the years. And then when we do a general plan update, if we choose to kind of address this by removing the policy altogether, or coming up with some different language, we could do it at that point.
Yeah, that's wonderful, I was just curious, and I think it would be helpful, since you've done all the work to go through this, perhaps in the future, the next time you have to do this, for the state and for a report, to just catching the flag things that either need to be updated, or that we might not even need to have anymore in that form. So, so it makes it easier then for the next update, that would be essentially prepackaged, ready to go, and staff wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. So let's see if we have anything from any of my colleagues. Not at this point, I'm not seeing, oh, I do see a hand now from Vice Mayor Harvey, and then from Councilmember Ford.
Uh, yeah, along those same lines, I was curious, there were some items in there that were either marked not feasible, or cost prohibitive. So if I understand along the same lines as you responded to the mayor, it would be at the next update that we would address those? Because if it's something that's not feasible, I can't imagine that we would want to leave that in there, is that how we handle that?
Uh, yeah, I would say that's the case, or maybe if realities changed, where the feasibility, you know, became more of an option, and then the council wanted to raise that up and put it into our annual work plan as a part of goal setting, then we could pivot to try to address that and respond. It is, it is worth noting, a general plan is generally a 20-year document that you update about every seven to 10 years to keep it fresh from going stale, but it has a long vision and implementation timeline.
Thank you, thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks Mayor Lemon. I was just reading through these reports, this looks like a lot of person-time went into compiling these reports, and I wonder if in compiling them, you thought about for future reports, sort of establishing a procedure that every time something gets done, it gets noted in some spreadsheet somewhere, so next time you have to generate a report, it's more or less already there, you don't have to go back to every department and ask them to do everything, you know, catalog everything again.
Yeah, I think, you know, this was, the, the law passed that required these reports in 2019. You know, we've been kind of struggling with the onslaught of state legislation through that time period, and, and various other challenges, and so it was a, a effort to get this information compiled and put before you, and to get into the state. And absolutely, we will start to build out a program as to how we will update it and keep this information fresh annually moving forward. We haven't spent a lot of time on that, but I do appreciate the suggestion.
Perfect. Uh, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, I had a technical question about, how does this document live in terms of, is it, is it just a document that everyone, that has to be updated by hand manually? Or is there some kind of data structure where you can check boxes and pull data out from it? Like, for example, does it live in a program where it's possible to pull out everything that's complete? Or everything that's in progress and generate a report like that, or is this just one, really just one big document?
This is just one large document, the city doesn't actually have a lot of automated software programs for most of our systems, definitely not Community Development, and so as part of, one of the things we've been pivoting to through COVID too, is just, you know, electronic permit submission, and now we're trying to plan on electronic file management, storage, all those things, so it will get easier. But right now, this is just one document.
Okay, maybe, it's just something for me to keep in mind, I, I would love to see us switch to a different system for keeping track of all this, because it'd be really nice to have like a list just pulled out of, here are all the items that have not yet started, you know, so we as policymakers could look at that. So we as policymakers could look at that and just see, okay, what's in the general plan that we haven't done yet? But as it is now, I wouldn't want to make somebody go through the whole thing and copy and paste it. So thank you for explaining how that works.
All right. I'm not seeing any further questions from the council. This is not an action item, but since we've had some discussion, and I know there was a little public email on some parts of this at least, I believe, I'm going to open up just to see if we have any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Jenny Blaker, please go ahead.
Hello, this is Jenny Blaker, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I commented yesterday at the Planning Commission meeting, and so did I think about, I think there were about four letters about it from the public. I realize this is a report, and I realize you've done an awful lot of work on it. I was disappointed that the bike plan from 2014 hadn't been updated and is not in sync with the 2015 general plan or the county bike plan. And I realize you're going to be working on that, which is great. The reason why it matters is because we need to have clear plans before anything can be implemented on the ground. For example, recently, I believe, a contract for $5 million was signed for work on Highway 16, Caltrans Highway. And we were assured that there would be a safe pedestrian crossing and bike lanes. But had the bike plan been in place, it would also have been an opportunity to make sure that there could be off-the-road linkages with the existing network of, of bike trails over there. I just wanted to, to talk about the potential for more bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, given that we are supposed to be trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, vehicle miles traveled, get people out of their cars onto bikes and walking and help make that feel safe for people. There is an incredible network of trails in that northwest quadrant of Khatari, west of Highway 101, north of Highway 116, on water agency access roads. And it's a fantastic community resource for people walking, bicycling, picking kids out on bikes safely and so on. But some of it, some of it exists and some of it needs to be worked on and connections need to be made to it. At the local level, it's a, it's a fantastic resource for this community if people could only access it. But Highway 116 provides a major obstacle for getting there. On the regional bike plan map, there are, there are links, potential future links along the Laguna to Sebastopol, Forestville, via the county trail, et cetera. And I think we just need to get all the paperwork up to date so that those things can actually become manifested, so to speak. Thank you, I can see I've gone over time, so I'll stop there. Although I had one other issue about this, but I'll speak about it when we get.
You've got 10, almost, you've got seven seconds, go ahead.
Oh, okay. The other one, thank you. The other one was urban agriculture. There's, this speaks as though the general plan is about supporting urban agriculture as a desirable civic activity that improves the quality of urban life, food security, neighborhood safety and environmental stewardship. And yet the ordinance before you this evening, later on on the agenda, seems to me to be unnecessarily restrictive and more likely to inhibit rather than encourage urban agriculture in Khatari. That's it, thank you for letting me have the extra time.
You're quite welcome. Just because the letters in red doesn't mean you're out of time, it'll count down. But that's hard to keep track of and talk at the same time, I think, for people. I know I've found it difficult at times. So do we have any other public comments tonight, Mr. Patterson?
No, Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, so let's bring it back. We're being asked just to receive this report. Is there any further discussion from anybody in the council, any comments? Nope, all right with that. Well, thanks staff for an impressive amount of work on that very long-term document. And we'll jump next to our next presentation, which is a fiscal year 2223 financial update. So if we can go to our staff report on that next, please.
So, good evening, Mayor, council members, fellow staff and members of the public. Tonight, we'll be presenting a financial update for our fiscal year 2223, covering our first quarter, which is from July 1 to September 30. I'm going to see if I can progress this slide here and get us moving along. So I'd like to point out, unfortunately, first of all, within our reports, which is packet pages 186 to 194, with the creation of the report in our agenda system, it inserted a blank page, no blank page, all the data is intact within the report in the packet. So that report will be edited or made sure it doesn't have that additional page and will be placed on the city website for transparency subsequent to this meeting. Within the report is provided the summary, which is also included in the presentation, where we cover the citywide overview, which includes all of the citywide funds, a summary specifically for the general fund, as well as the enterprise fund, followed by a snapshot of the cash and investment balances as of the fiscal quarter end. So before we jump into the numbers, I do want to provide some general information that applies throughout, specifically for this first quarter. So revenue recognition is based on the period and the revenue is earned, but is receipted through October 21. So in some circumstances, like specifically sales tax, we have receipts in July and August that we received the cash subsequent to the year, but they were late to May and June. So for our audit, they're all included in the 2122 fiscal year. So when we look at this report, we do have included the receipts for August and July as they were received through October. Separately for expenditures, many new types of contracts, specifically for capital projects, they have a different project cycle almost every year. We like to do some capital projects at certain times of year to avoid rain or to better leverage, better costing. However, they do fluctuate, and so comparing to budget can be off, as well as comparing quarter to quarter can also be. So looking at it just in the numbers and comparing it, the revenues to expenditures on a percentage basis, overall, our funds are in line with our financial expectations, given those previously discussed variances. So special revenues are primarily derived from other special taxes, which are reported to the city similarly to sales tax, many months after they're actually collected. And so this delay in revenue also delays the expenditures in which those special funds are. Additionally, I want to point out the internal services have decreased and revenues and expenditures are primarily due to delays and timing. Those vehicle expenditures, it kind of takes a long time to order those vehicles. Once we adopt a budget, we then come to council for approval for purchasing that equipment and vehicles, and then we have to order them. And then there's also been a delay in receiving those expenditures or those equipment for replacement. Additionally, within the internal service fund is the compensated absences, or compensated absences fund, excuse me, which are paid out primarily at the end of the calendar year or the beginning of the calendar year, when people are looking to maybe use some of those funds in different ways. And so that's when those typically have those expenditures incurred. So as previously stated, sorry, I'm going to fix my little earbud here. The overall adjustment in revenues are in line with our expectation. They are on target, expecting any adjustments or any significant changes for our budget per year as right now. The revenues for the general fund, which we'll go through in more detail, are primarily driven by the timing of receipt from sales tax, property tax and those development charges. The water and sewer funds bill on a bi-monthly basis. And so for this in quarter one, we only have one billing cycle included within the period. As such, we only have that revenue, so one-sixth of the revenue for the period. And for expenses, overall, they're about 12.6% of budget due to those timing of capital projects and special contracts for projects. So let's dive a bit deeper into the general fund, which is the primary fund for the general city services, including public works, police, administration, community development and recreation. Overall, revenues are at 18.7% of budget and for operations at a decrease of the same quarter of about 1%. Last year, the general fund received a transfer of $886,000 from our American Rescue Plan Act Fund. These funds were used as revenue replacement due to the loss of revenues related to COVID-19. And having that replacement of funds allowed the city to continue to work on our West Side Street Improvement Project. On the flip side, the expenditures from operations, there was also almost a 1% decrease from prior year and is really in line with budget at approximately 22.3% of the budget used today. When looking at expenditures on a department or function level, as provided in the council packet in the, the report, it's page 191 in the council packet. It does note that the recreation department is a bit higher than 25% of their budget. However, this is due to their significant of work that they do during the summer with camp and kids day and everything else too. So they have that little influx of staffing that come in to help with. So this is the revenues for the general fund I typically like to provide. But you can tell that this one's a little bit different, what I usually provide, because there's a big chunk missing. So the property tax, which is typically about a quarter, or you know, 33% or so, sitting in the corner, is not there because those receipts aren't received until September. So you can really see by showing this graph how dependent we are on sales tax for continuing operations and cash flow as we go through the year. So I just wanted to present this to you. So for other operations, we will next go into the inter, which are the water and sewer funds. And that was the construction work being done outside my window as they were starting on the replacement. So in comparing revenues to the prior period and budget, the primary difference is due to both final balloon payments in the interfund debt service between the water and wastewater funds. This significant payment from water to sewer was a part of our rate study plan and was used to keep the utility users from possible higher rates in our plan. So it was strategically done in order to keep some of those rates down, to get some more funding back into the sewer fund as it's needed it for continuing operations and capital improvement. The other big piece of this difference is due to the decrease in revenue, primarily from connection fees, as the significant residential projects were completed in the prior year. So other changes of note I want to bring up are the decrease in the aqueduct water payment at about a 5.7% decrease from prior year. This is due to decreased usage really, because we know that the rates have increased. So this is a direct correlation to decreased usage during the period. Alternatively, we have a 9.2% increase in the cost of wastewater treatment. While both are in line with budget, we're going to continue to evaluate these costs and monitor them and look forward to seeing where we are at mid-year. So on to our cash position as of September 30. This again is a little bit different than the previous parts of the report because it is a snapshot of our citywide pooled cash and investments as of a specific date. So it doesn't provide any comparative information or the changes in the balance because that's all derived from the previous information, which is the cash received as well as the cash expended. The overall cash investments is at 19.3 million in our pooled funds, with a majority of these funds held in the local agency investment funds, also known as LAES, which is managed by the state. Overall, cash and investments are sufficient in order to meet a six-month emergency operation need in line with our policy, as well as these investment types are in line with our policy. So here's a breakout of the pooled funds based on both the composition. So that's again, as we talked about in the last slide, which is that balance of LAES versus operating cash and other investments in skip and RBC. And I do have to apologize, I also presented the cash investments by value in the funds. And the information presented in the slide was incorrect, it accidentally grabbed the wrong piece. So we have corrected amounts for both the sewer, which is at 3.7 million, and the internal service fund, which is corrected at only 700,000. So that does not have 2 million and it, that is not correct, it's just the 700,000. But you'll see that a majority of the funds is held in the general fund pooled cash at approximately 5.4%. So in conclusion, really, it's hard to tell when you're just looking at a snapshot of, of a quarter. But when we compare things to a prior quarter, as well as comparing it to budget, we are primarily on track with that budget, with slightly decreased revenues, but also slightly decreased expenditures compared to the prior. We're not anticipating any budget amendments or adjustments at this time, and we will reevaluate when we get to the mid-year. We'll continue to update council with these quarterly financial reports. Again, our next one will be our mid-year report. But we also have an audit we are wrapping up right now. We will hopefully present, you know, more information and provide out to the community, or not just our annual financial statements, but our public, our popular annual financial statements, which just summarizes our, our gigantic document into a brief 10-page, small, half-page document. And then we're going to continue to working towards long-range financial projections, as well as we're looking on our strategic planning. And we're just going to continue to drive to providing more and better transparent information to the council and our public as we move forward. That will end my presentation.
Well, excellent, thank you very much. Let me first check with council and see if anybody has any questions for you on, on that report on the budget so far. Well, this is good news, I'm not seeing any unhappy faces or hands going up right away. That's usually what you want to see in a budget presentation, except for the vice mayor, I did see one hand go up.
Thank you, Mayor, it's not really a question. I just want to thank Angela for giving us these reports. And in years past, we often didn't get this, often an update. We were, you know, maybe got a mid-year update and then the final. And I think it's really helpful for us to get these quarterly updates so we can kind of see trends as we move along and fully understanding that, that it's a point in time and things don't necessarily go along the same lines. And you have to take that into account, but I really appreciate these quarterly updates. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor.
If I can jump in, I'm sorry. I just, I, I appreciate the gratitude and I also, I need to thank my staff, it's not just me. I have a team here, and if I wasn't supported also by Damian, I mean, it would be much more difficult to prioritize this. But it is a priority and we want to keep driving forward.
Well, yeah, thank you, thank you for those comments. And you know, it is, it's reflective of the city, it's taken years of hard work and building the resources, the staff and the ability to be able to get to these things, not in all departments, not just here, but on a best practices basis like this with the quarterly reports. And I think this is endemic of what you as a staff and we as a community have been able to do together in the last decade. So, so I'm very pleased with that as well. I'm not seeing any other hands, so you know, this is not an action item, but seeing it's at the budget, and I have nine people attending the meeting, I am going to open it to public comment, just in case somebody has a question or a comment.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. So let's bring this back here, let's see. So all we have for this is to receive, so if there's no further comments or questions from the council, I'll thank staff very much for that, and we'll move on from our presentations to our next item, which is approval of the final agenda, another action item. which is approval of the final agenda, another action item. And I'll ask the city manager if we have any changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes to the agenda.
And I doubt seriously anybody's going to want to comment on this, but it is listed as an action item. So I can do my duty and open it to public comment.
Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. There was a hand, but it disappeared. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Creating a legacy hand, who knows? I do that all the time. It's easy to do. So this brings us now to item eight, which is citizens business and public comment for consent calendar items. And once again, I do have a paragraph to read and I will ask you all to bear with me. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar or any matter of matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy twenty twenty-one dash zero one, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And as always, the mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So let's jump right into citizen business and see if we have any comments tonight or public comment for consent calendar items either.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If he would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. If you're dialing in, dial star nine. Neil Hancock, please go ahead.
Yes, hello, council. I'd just like to thank for the new website that's gone up. It's been very sticky and very fast in the response. And particularly, there is one item on it, which is an earthquake brace and bolt program. I've been looking around for some ten years for some help, maybe, or being able to find some consultants who would be able to advise. I have a nineteen, late nineteen fifty's house and part of it has got some retrofits to it. But this was on the website, an earthquake brace and bolt program, and I've been able to follow through to the source website that the state has put out. And thank you very much for that information. That's the end of my comment.
Kay Rivers, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, hi, thank you. I just wanted to ask about the item about closing the West Street or the West Side Street project. And I wanted to just confirm this acceptance of the twenty twenty-one pavement preservation West Side project. And as I'm reading it, I'm understanding that the request is to close that as completed. And I just wanted to confirm that there was not in the plans, any kind of lighting for West Catati Avenue between West Sierra and school. Right now, there's just no streetlights at all, and they do have a nice little walking section there, but absolutely no lighting. So I just wanted to confirm whether or not that was not part of the street project or if that is still happening. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, thank you, number one, to Mr. Hancock. Glad to see that the new website had some useful information. And that's the benefit of having a large staff working on things. We can find things people need and there you go. And the fact that it took ten years and we were able to provide it, got to feel good about that. So glad to hear it. I'll let staff comment regarding the lighting, but I can give some information for you, Ms. Rivers. Because I actually remember I was at the meeting when this was discussed, and this was long before I was on city council. This was before about the time I think they were looking to building that path. As you know, we all live in the same neighborhood together. And members of the community that night, there was originally a thought to put some lighting in there. And actually, the members of the community didn't really want typical sidewalks or lighting. They liked the more non-city, more country feel of this side of the town. And actually requested for that not to happen. So I can tell you that's, that was not part of it, but I'll let staff comment if they'd like to.
Mayor, I'll add that there was no new lighting installed as part of, or planned to be installed as part of that project.
All right. So with that, let's see. So we've had our comment and our comments on consent calendar. So this does bring us then to item nine, which is the consent calendar. And I'll ask, we have three items tonight, A, B, and C. And I'll ask first if any council member wishes to pull any item. And I'm looking for a second here. I'm seeing heads shaking. No. So if not, then I'll look for a motion and a second perhaps to pass that consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And a second from Councilmember Sparks. Thank you. All right. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And that's a yes for me as well. Thank you. So that concludes that and brings us to item ten, which is direction on future agenda items. And I'll just look briefly to the council and see if we have any direction, any new items tonight. And I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I think that is a perfect segue to our next item, item eleven, which is public hearings. So we do have a public hearing tonight. And this is the introduction, again, of inordinance to amend the city's land use code to facilitate urban agriculture. You may recognize this. So with this, I'll open it to the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Yes, at long last, we are bringing to you the revised potential zoning code amendment to promote urban agriculture. Very pleased to be finally getting this here to you tonight. Next slide, please. So there's a long, well, relatively long history here. As you know, we've we've been working on this project for the last year. Back in fall of twenty-one, a whole year ago, the city council directed the staff to prepare zoning code amendments to promote urban agriculture to further meet general plan goals for the city. And then staff worked on that zoning code amendment. And in March of last year, we had a planning commission hearing on the first round, sort of the version one, the beta test of the proposed Urban Act ordinance. And the planning commission recommended that. Then we came to the council and the council really felt that what was being proposed wasn't really what they were looking for. And so they asked, you asked staff to prepare a workshop to hear more community input and look at some different strategies. And that duly occurred on June thirtieth of this year. And the council provided direction to staff, which I will, will go into later, a little bit more about what that was. We'll do a review. And staff worked on an updated version of the ordinance. That ordinance, which is substantial, which is what we're looking at tonight as well, that went to the planning commission in September. The planning commission voted to recommend that the council adopt that ordinance with some minor changes, which I will review in a few minutes. Unfortunately, there was a really unfortunate clerical error that occurred. And one important piece was left out of the ordinance with that draft when it went to the planning commission. So we had to go back. We, I inadvertently left out the daycare center use for the open space and recreation district. We left out that proposal. And so we need to go back to the planning commission last night to see if they would like to add that into their recommendation, and they did. Just to quick recap, the daycare center land use is the closest among the defined land uses that we can find in our code that would allow for youth education programs to take place at Veranda Faletti Ranch, which is really kind of the goal of that, that particular piece there. And we'll get more into that a little bit later. So it's back in. And we have a whole package for you tonight. Next slide, please. I'd like to just really quickly go over where we stand currently with zoning that relates to urban agriculture and urban gardening activities in Catati. Currently, home gardens are permitted in all residential zones by right. Commercial crop production is allowed with a use permit in the rural residential district. Produce stands up to four hundred square feet are allowed also with a use permit in the RR Rural Residential District. Those are accessory to the crop production land use. Community gardens are allowed with a minor use permit in all of our residential districts and the open space recreation or OSR district. Up to twenty chickens for non-commercial purposes are allowed by right per property in residential districts. And roosters are allowed only in the RR District, Rural Residential. Next slide, please. So the direction that we received from the council at the workshop on June thirtieth was threefold primarily. One was to develop a complementary alternative to the crop production land use. So to keep crop production kind of as our larger scale agricultural activity, but to develop a smaller scale agricultural land use that would be appropriate in any of the residential districts potentially. In addition, the council asked that we develop standards that would reduce potential impacts of urban agriculture activities on nearby residents. And we also increased noticing to neighbors when there is a permit being considered for certain of the agricultural uses. The council also directed that they were okay, you were okay with low impact onsite sales from in urban agriculture settings, not just produce, but including eggs and cottage foods. So foods developed onsite. And so all of this direction has informed the revised ordinance that we're bringing to you tonight. Next slide, please. Okay, and to get right into the provisions of the new proposed ordinance. So we have the market garden land use designation that is proposed to be created. And this land use would be smaller scale agriculture for sale or donation. It would be permitted by right in all of the residential zoning districts. Residential scale mechanical equipment only could be used on these sites, seeking to avoid larger, noisier equipment that might create dust, vibrations, other impacts. The use would be limited to the hours of nine to five. There would be an exception for periodic site preparation where heavier equipment might be allowed onsite. The size of the market gardens would be limited to a half acre in cultivation area, and that could be non-continuous pieces of, of the areas in the property. A total of a half acre in size, five-foot setbacks would be required from the property lines. Because these are residential districts that we are talking about, a dwelling unit would be required on the site as the primary use. So the market garden could only be an accessory use to residential, which would be primary onsite. In addition to just growing the food at this market garden, an onsite garden stand would be allowed as well. It would be small, a hundred feet, square feet, a hundred square feet in size maximum, allowed to operate two days a week from nine AM to seven PM. Moved completely out of sight of the public when not in operation, and two parking spaces would be required, although these could be on or off-street. Next slide, please. I also looked at some of the other aspects of urban agriculture beyond the market garden. So as I said, we have the crop production land use already in existence. It's currently allowed just in the rural residential zone as with produce stands. So the proposal now with this ordinance is to extend those two land uses to the open space recreation district and to the residential very low district, also with a use permit. In addition, we're proposing to allow community-supported agriculture, CSA, with crop production so that agricultural and gardening operations have the opportunity to sell their produce on a membership basis, increasing their other financial viability. Garden stands and produce stands would be allowed to sell eggs and cottage foods produced onsite or at an adjacent property. And the prohibition on commercial hen keeping would be removed in order to allow that that activity of selling eggs to happen. But the limit is proposed to remain at twenty hens per property and no more. There is at this point, no proposal from staff to change the way that roosters are allowed within the city. So it would remain just in the RR zone. Next slide, please. We also looked at community gardens. This is an important part of local food production. The draft ordinance proposes to permit community gardens by right in all of the residential zones and with a use permit in the open space recreation zone. Just like with market gardens, there'd be limitation on the use of mechanical equipment to reduce impacts. Five-foot setbacks would be in place as well. Additionally, a soil analysis would be required to just, to make sure that, to check for toxics or contamination at the, at the property. And we would require a management plan be prepared and filed with the city and that the contact person for a given garden would also be on file with the city and updated annually. Next slide, please. We also have some additional requirements related to permitting for urban agriculture uses that do require permits under this, this new ordinance. One is that planning permit fees would be reduced by fifty percent. So to the extent that a use requires a permit, that would be half of the standard permit fee. So that would primarily apply to crop production, the produce stands and farmers markets. And just as a reminder, a use permit is about forty-three hundred dollars right now. A minor use permit is about eighteen hundred dollars. That's this year's fee schedule. So the fee for an agricultural use coming in would be half of that. A use permit would require a finding of compatibility with nearby residential uses. And public hearing notices for these permits would be sent to property owners within a six-hundred-foot radius rather than the standard five-hundred-foot to increase neighbor awareness of what's going on, what's being proposed. In keeping with the council's request for some additional performance standards, we have a number of new ideas to add. One is that urban agriculture may not affect the livability or appropriate development of adjacent properties in terms of noise, water runoff, pesticide runoff, equipment operation, hours of operation, odor, vermin, security or vehicular traffic. In addition, and as you know, as we've discussed this, pesticides and similar substances, we're not allowed to regulate the use of those substances on private property. So unfortunately, prohibition, as has been discussed, of pesticides and herbicides, et cetera, is not possible. But we're stating that the use is discouraged, and if they are used, they should not impact neighboring properties. In addition, urban ag uses need to practice water conservation measures and make sure that compost piles are located at least twenty feet from dwellings on adjacent properties. Next slide, please. Okay, moving on to Veranda Faletti Ranch, which is an important part of the city's efforts to promote urban agriculture. So as you know, the, the, the plan for Veranda Faletti Ranch has been a demonstration farm with educational and community activities onsite. And as we currently stand, that's not actually allowed according to our zoning. The zoning for the property is neighborhood low density. And so we are proposing to rezone the property to open space recreation and to then amend the OSR zoning to allow certain uses that have been identified as possibilities for the property. And these would all require a use permit. That these would include agricultural accessory structures, animal keeping, crop production, possibly a plant nursery, possibly artisan and craft product manufacturing. Community garden is an, would be an option, meeting facility to accommodate classes, workshops. to accommodate classes, workshops, uh caretaker quarters, a farmer's market possibly. A produce stands and again, the the daycare center, which made it back on the list. Um and again, the idea with the daycare center, land use being allowed in OSR is not to operate a daycare center. But rather to be able to allow youth education programs. Uh at Veranda Falletti Ranch or other city-owned properties that are that are OSR zoned. And that would be everything from, if Veranda Falletti Ranch would be everything from pre-kindergarten through twelfth grade educational programs. As well as programs for adults first. Okay, next slide please. Uh the community development department is um taking this opportunity to ask the council to make a few changes to the zoning code. Uh that are really just to facilitate planning and development activities in in the city. Um one is related to the uh the setbacks that are required for residential accessory structures. Uh so according to the current uh language in the zoning code. An accessory structure which is ten feet high, up to ten feet high, can have a five foot setback from the property lines. But then all of a sudden going from ten feet to twelve feet, twelve feet is the maximum height for these structures. Uh the setbacks switch back to whatever the setback is for the primary structure on the property. And that could be up to twenty feet in some zones. And so staff's opinion is that the two-foot height difference doesn't necessarily warrant significantly larger setbacks. And so we're proposing to apply the five-foot setback to all of the accessory structures, all the way up to the maximum height allowed of twelve feet. And we feel this will help to streamline and simplify uh the the code. Um in addition, we um are looking at an addition of neighborhood meeting requirements. So uh we're proposing the discussion discretionary projects that require a tentative map. Or have a scope of development greater than one acre would require a pre-application neighborhood meeting to ensure early community input into the process. Uh further, the projects that do require such a neighborhood meeting would be required to place a project sign onsite for at least ten days prior to the public hearings. To make sure that the public has uh increased notice of significant projects that are being proposed. Next slide please. Jumping back to urban agriculture, uh the, this uh proposal has been reviewed by the planning commission. And uh they have recommended council approval of the draft ordinance. Uh they have a couple of, um the planning commission has a couple of revisions that they have requested. And we have incorporated into the current draft that you're seeing tonight. One is that community gardens, uh that community garden rules that relate to pesticide use, herbicides, rodenticides. Fertilizer need to be stated in the management plan for that community garden. And that is to the extent that there are rules that the community garden has in place, that those would appear in the management plan. Um so that the pu, the city has notice and the public can access that information as well. Uh secondly, um the planning commission wanted to require that produce stands and gar, garden stands adhere to state and county regulations related to safe retail food handling. And they also suggested um, you know, the requirement, which makes a lot of sense to us. To include a city of Katoni business license requirement, that that actually appear in the ordinance because it did not previously. However, subsequent to that planning commission discussion, uh staff discovered that there is actually an exemption in the code for business licenses for agricultural businesses that are selling their own produce onsite. So this is actually kind of a non-issue, okay? Um the s, the planning commission is also putting forth its recommendation to add child daycare daycare centers and allowed use in the OSR district. The planning commission also recommended removal of a provision for sales of incidental items at produce stands. And this provision would allow for sales of bottled water, packaged snacks and non-food items up to ten percent of floor area. This is just at the produce stands, which are the larger stands that require a use permit. And are limited in which districts they can be in. Uh the planning commission's concerns were really wanting to keep the focus on on produce, agricultural products. And also concerns about litter that might be generated by packaged items being sold at produce stands. Um uh the sta, staff has left this provision in the current draft as is with the ten percent cap. Uh our feeling is that um keeping that provision increases the financial viability somewhat of produce stands. Uh and all of these activities would be regulated through the use permit for each of these produce stands as well. So what exactly they would be selling and doing, whether, you know, how that would all be handled would be addressed in the use permit. So we have a a layer of uh oversight there. Uh the planning commission also requested that the council consider increasing the number of days per week that garden stands can operate to ensure that uh produce can be sold when it's fresh. And reduce losses of of produce that might spoil well if garden stand is waiting for its next day of operation to come around. Uh so currently, two days are proposed. Uh the planning commission is hoping that the the council will have some discussion about that. Uh and consider whether they are happy with that or would like to see some change in that uh provision. Next slide please. Hi, uh so the community development department and the planning commission recommend that the city council introduce an ordinance amending the zoning code to facilitate local food production and urban agriculture. And I am available to answer your questions.
All right, well, let's jump right in and see if anybody in the council has a question. And I see a hand from the vice mayor. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I do have a question on um packet page two seventy. Um on the notification requirements, we talked about it being six hundred feet. Yet in the uh ordinance um that is on that package page, it says five hundred feet. So is it five hundred or six hundred, right?
I'm sorry, say the, can you say the page number again?
Packet, packet page two seventy.
Seventy.
Under section six, notifications required. We talked about six hundred, but it the actual pa, page says five hundred.
Yeah, so for urban agriculture uses, it is is proposed to be six hundred. The section you're looking at actually um it relates to the neighborhood meetings for larger projects. So that's one of those those sneaky things that community development has included in the ordinance uh out of convenience. And that part does not actually relate to the urban agriculture. It's it's the provision for um adding neighborhood meetings and signage for larger development projects. And we would not want to be consistent.
So Vice Mayor, I'd like to address this. So the typical noticing requirement is five hundred feet for all reasons. The council had concern over urban agriculture is likely to be on relatively larger parcels. Uh in por, portions of town where six hundred feet was, or five hundred feet was seen to not be adequate to at, to really inform all the parcels that may be affected. So the direction was to bump that to six.
Okay.
Typically for urban agriculture.
Okay, it just seems that we should be consistent, but fine, thank you.
Yeah, the uh the six hundred feet appears in the footnotes to the land use tables. So I'm looking at package page two fifty-eight and it is, it is the six hundred feet. And I would look at um for, um it's my, it's my understanding that it's the director's discretion whether we might have additionally larger radiuses for noticing of projects. So in some cases, then we might end up with these larger development projects at a larger radi, than radius than five hundred feet. At the director's discretion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I have some questions about page, packet page three oh five about the neighborhood meetings. First, I was wondering if you could, um I have two questions. Um first question, I was wondering if you could, just to clarify, when a meeting would or wouldn't be required. Can you give an example of a neighborhood of a, a type of urban agriculture endeavor that would not require a neighborhood meeting? Because it, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, uh Councilmember Sparks. So uh I I will say, and thank you, uh Associate Planner Buss. So we took this opportunity to uh address some things that have been kind of longstanding, even prior to the election of Councilmember Sparks and Councilmember Ford. We committed to expanding on our neighborhood engagement and community engagement for development projects. Um I think in nineteen, two thousand nineteen or twenty. Uh we have, we have this practice of for larger scale uh development projects, currently defined as over an acre. Um or with a sub, any subdivision, where we would require the developer to have a neighborhood meeting with the folks who are within five hundred feet of that property. So just let them know that, hey, this is coming, do you have any input into this? And I always use the example of a trash enclosure. Sometimes somebody will put a trash enclosure for an apartment project right next to somebody's bedroom window. It's gonna be a guaranteed problem. If you just had an opportunity to hear directly from residents upfront, you could relocate that site plan, shift it around a bit before you even applied. We talked about this uh with the council several years ago, there was full unanimous support for it. We've tried to uh, or we have done this for a few of the larger development projects that we've had, but it's not codified. Similarly, we put those onsite neighborhood or project signs onsite, kind of uh case-by-case basis. There's no code requirement for it, so we're we're requesting, because we're already touching the noticing uh portions of the code as a part of this ordinance, to implement some of that past direction and and current practice to really codify it. So then if we have a conflict with the developer and they're saying, well, why are you making me do this? There's nowhere in the code. We can point to it and say, it's actually codified. And generally, it's a best practice. Uh these requirements are very typical throughout all the jurisdictions in Sonoma County. So we're trying to just bring our engagement efforts kind of into um consistent and best practice throughout the county.
So back to, thank you for that um description. Um so can you speak to how this would be implemented in an urban agriculture setting?
I I don't think it, there would be any instance in an urban agriculture project that would require a neighborhood meeting. Because it's not development and it's not a subdivision.
Okay, so if somebody was proposing, was was coming through a discretionary project to get a use permit to do crop production on their parcel, uh and there was significant controversy around it. Would, that wouldn't trigger a neighborhood meeting?
Uh well, so this is intended to happen before a development application is even submitted. So if a project is applied, say, a use permit for crop production, um staff then it's not codified again, but staff often will do a notice of application just to let people know, hey, this is in, we're reviewing it. If you're interested, take a look at our projects in progress page and there's all the information about the project um on the website. So people can familiarize themselves. We've had this conversation where the current process doesn't notify neighbors that a project is in and under review until it's about to be ready for a decision at the planning commission. And that is the worst time to tell somebody for the first time that something's happening in their neighborhood is right before it's about to be decided. And so in your, in your example, staff would send a notice of application out after the application was received. Directing anybody interested to look at the website for details and following up with us directly if they have any questions or concerns.
So then would there be a neighborhood meeting as a result of that if controversy arose? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, I mean, there's no code requirement for a neighborhood meeting, other than what's proposed for the council today. Um the de facto neighborhood meeting in that situation would be the planning commission public hearing required to decide any use permit.
Okay, thank you. Um my second question was um actually, I think you answered it all right. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, and I believe I saw a hand from Councilmember Ford as well.
You did, thanks so much. Um so Councilmember Sparks's question, just raised a question about the the language in that section fourteen. Um I I understand why people are currently reading that with a urban ag lens, even though that's not what was intended. And it currently says, each discretionary project with a scope of development greater than one acre shall require a pre-application meeting. So that sure sounds like it would include a urban ag proposal bigger than a, than an acre. And so if you could insert a word there that that talks about actually building something, you know. It, a project is proposed to build buildings and I don't know what you call such discretionary projects, um that might help that. Um the other, my other question was about the parking requirement. Um it's fairly, it just says two spaces on-street or off are required. What does that mean? Like the the, the stand has to be within X number of feet of some onsite or offsite parking spaces? Or or would the, would the applicant actually have to provide and I I I'm not sure. Or or ensure that those two spaces weren't used by other users or what would that look like?
Um so it's, it's purposely left a little bit vague at this point. The, what the, what the language actually says is that the parking spaces would be adjacent to the property, front of the property. I think adjacent is a somewhat vague term, at least in my interpretation of it. Um so, you know, I think that we would be looking to make sure that there isn't any displacement of other parking going on. And you know, that might lead to a complaint if there was, and then we'd need to address that. But otherwise, we're assuming that two parking spaces somewhere along the block are going to be fine. And this is, again, this is a provision we we um adopted from the city of Sacramento, which arguably has, you know, much much tighter parking uh in a number of its urbanized areas in the downtown where, you know, a lot of this farming is happening apparently. Um and uh they left it pretty open as well.
And I I would just add typically adjacent would mean on the curb, if it's not on the site, then it's on the curb frontage of a parcel or on the curb frontage across the street from that parcel.
Okay, and one, one quick wording issue with, on packet page three oh three. Um the language is a minimum of two motor vehicle parking spaces, either on-street or off-street out of the public right-of-way. It's not clear what out of the public r, right-of-way modifies. It sounds like it modifies both the on-street and off-street provisions and that. I don't think that's what meant, what's meant. On-street usually means within the public right-of-way, so. I don't know if there's an extra comma that could fix that or something like that, because it could be read to mean your two on-street spaces also need to be out of the public right-of-way.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you, good point.
Yeah, right, thank you. And let's jump to Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Um so explain to me why there should be a childcare center at Veranda Falletti? You're muted.
Sorry, there is no proposal to put a childcare center at Veranda Falletti. When you look at a zoning code, there's land use tables that are, that identify individual uses that are allowed or not allowed on different properties. A daycare center, as it's currently defined, also allows the educational programs for children at Valanda, Veranda Falletti Ranch. So not rewriting to come up with a different educational program for children land use. We're using daycare, because if you look at the other definition we looked at was schools. Of those two, the daycare definition more fits what they do there now. So that's all it is. And this is very typical of land use. You have kind of a general description that then as somebody shows up at the front counter and says, here's my proposed business. We have to look at that and look at the definitions of the variety of uses that we have defined in the code and see how it does or doesn't fit into those to decide what's allowed or not. So all this is doing is creating a an allowed way for educational uses, serving children to occur at the the Veranda Falletti property as it's envisioned and is currently occurring today.
So if this were not in this particular amended ordinance here. Uh would there be anything that would preclude them from having educational sessions there?
That, the, the use that Sandy Loma is is operating from that facility is not allowed in that zoning district currently.
And so, okay, so the only way that they can do any educational components other than calling it a school is to call it a childcare center. So the only way that they can do any educational components other than calling it a school is to call it a childcare center.
Or to, that's correct, or to write a whole new definition just for that one-off use, which we try not to do. We try to have general uses that can be applied more broadly throughout all uses in the city, depending on where they are or not, or are not allowed in those different zoning districts.
Okay, so there's no other way to incorporate language that would allow for the occasional educational components? Other than having that particular language in there?
Well, I, I'm not going to say there, there, we could come up with a different way to do it. This is the most efficient, most typical way from the staff perspective.
And under, under the Sandy Loom program right now, that is a um, uh, nonprofit enterprise?
Uh, City Manager Obed, do you, do you know the details on that?
Uh, it's, it's run, it, it runs programs that um, that are for the public. I mean, the ones that we contract with them for are public programs. Yeah. I don't, I don't, um, we actually have someone on, on the line here that's from Sandy Loom. I don't think they're a IRS registered nonprofit, if that's what you're asking. But we contract with them for certain programs that are available for the public.
Okay. And are, are any of those programs that they provide through uh Veranda Falletti um cost involved?
Yeah, the way, the way it works is um, is we set up the registration and we set the price where we want to set it, which we think is so accessible to the community. And um, then we essentially fund the program and the work plan as kind of like a contractor essentially. And um, I will say too that this, this um, the, the general umbrella land use description that we're talking about, this daycare use. Um, just, I think it's also important to keep in mind too that um, that the one land use we're talking about is the OSR land use, which is by definition, a city property, which in this case also happens to have a conservation easement over it and also license agreements and also annually approved work plans by the council. And also a, a use permit, which is going to be coming along. So there's, there's no way that like a, a daycare, as you might, or someone might think of a daycare. It was just going to randomly pop up. And if it were, we could immediately end it because we have complete control of all those properties. So it's much more than just the code. I mean, we physically control the property in every sense of the word.
Okay, it's just that language kind of scares me when it's in there. Uh, because you know, you envision something with, with have languages. Uh, so, yeah, okay. I, I will go from there. Thank you very much for the information.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm not seeing any more hands pop up on the list. So let's open the public hearing and hear from the public on this.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raised hand icon. Ashwarya, please go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Ashwarya Kanchala. I am the administrator of Sandy Loom. And um, I just wanted to uh address um, some of the concerns about the daycare language um, as described in this bill. Um, essentially what the designation of a daycare allows us to do is to be a licensed facility to serve children um through summer camps and uh farm and nature enrichment programs. So if uh we were to not be designated as a daycare, we would not be able to get a license to serve children. Um, and that would essentially prevent us from hosting summer camps and enrichment programs at the ranch. So I just wanted to um provide our input.
Jenny Blaker, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, it seems as though um, the, the easiest way to get the language in is to call it a daycare center. And that really, one of the main purposes, as I see it, of Veranda Falletti Ranch is to promote educational programs and opportunities for children of all ages to have hands-on experiences, learning about and working with plants and animals. So I hope that you will approve this wording because um without it, obviously, the ranch would lose a lot of its main purpose and its value as a resource for Katari neighboring community schools and other groups, other children, teachers, um, et cetera. So that seems really important. I just wanted to say also that um, I still feel as if this um proposed ordinance is incredibly restrictive um, on everything from people who might just have a little extra fruit or eggs to sell during the summer to people seriously trying to set up um a small business farming. Uh, for example, the two-day-a-week garden stands doesn't seem to make sense at all. There could be, as someone else I think wrote in, um, there could be more than one in one street, you know, open at, there could be several on one street, possibly all open two days a week at different times. But more importantly, it seems important for people to be able to sell their food as fresh as possible, not let things go to waste, not to, not have to have a, a lot of extra storage space or refrigeration, et cetera, to keep their food. Um, and I, I can't imagine that there are going to be, you know, huge areas setting up with stands all over the place. I can imagine small table for a couple of weeks or sometimes something bigger and more permanent. And then good for them, go for it, you know, make a success of it. Um, things like the setbacks, the restrictions to half an acre for a market garden um, seem to make it really difficult for people to have enough space to do what they need to do if they're trying to grow food um at a serious level for local consumption. Um, and then the hours of use for mechanized equipment, nine to five, when a lot of people would be doing this um in addition to other full-time jobs and surely should be able to um do some work earlier in the morning, maybe early evening. And often other equipment that people are using in their gardens, like weed whackers and leaf blowers are probably going to be noisier than what would be used for people growing food. Um, I just would love to see it made more encouraging and more possible for people to be growing food locally um, rather than having so many restrictions that make it, make it really hard for people. That's it. Thank you very much.
Roy Smith, please go ahead. Roy Smith, you have the floor. It looks like you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, thank you. So um, yes, I'm commenting on the, the um ordinance regarding local food. And what I'd really like to see is an ordinance that aligns Katari with the goals of the general plan. Um, in going through it, it seems that we've departed from that or actively suppressing it. And we suppress any activity through regulation and taxation, which is what this ordinance does. If we want to support it, at a minimum, we have to permit it as a by right activity. The, the county has been working on this idea of, of local security in a diverse economy since at least uh eleven, that in, in this current Katari version. If we are not going to align with the general plan goals, I suggest we delay any final ordinance adoption until we have the committee and, and council on board with the actual county objectives. And what I, what I see is that, that the um, the primary issue seems to center around the concept of, of um urban or peri-urban agriculture as being a nuisance activity. I'm not sure where this comes from. I, I'm, I've been in the area since nineteen seventy-eight. My family has always grown and gardened. My grandfather farmed locally. We sold our produce when we had extra, which is always a seasonal activity. Rather than a nuisance, it was an asset to all those around us and all those that we could sell to. I really am confused as to the concept that this is equivalent to at a development or some commercial activity. By using the words commercial production, we seem to imply that there are industrial facilities involved. When we're talking about shovels and rakes and very simple activities, th- these are not nuisance activities. I don't think that any resident would, would actually shift from private gardening to sales with this ordinance. In fact, by doing so, they would, they would be limiting their ability to garden. They'd be limiting their ability to do anything, including where they could park their cars. They would be limiting their ability to, to do things according to um what other people in the, in the neighborhood want to do. In other words, this six hundred foot consultation, I would certainly not want to have that kind of scrutiny on my activities. I don't know who would. There's no economic incentive for people to do this. So what we're asking people to do is a pro-social activity that, that helps the, the neighborhood. Um, so what I'd ask is that we do not have any days of operation limitation and that we do not have a parking requirement. Um, we need to do something about these permit fees that's simply not going to allow people to be financially viable at all. And eliminating, and we'd eliminate the hours of operation or work restrictions. Uh, I know I'm over, one final thing is that um regarding the Filati Ranch, I believe we should support the historic functions of that ranch, which is al- also part of the general plan, which specifically says that uh intact lands should be retained in their historic use. And that is a, a, a wonderful example of that right in the middle of our city, including the involvement of local use on the property. Thank you very much.
Carrie McGrath, you have the floor.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Carrie with University of California Cooperative Extension. I'm the agricultural ombuds. Um, unfortunately, my coworker Julia couldn't be here tonight, who's I would consider pretty much an expert in urban ag. Uh, the University of California Cooperative Extension supports a thriving local food system and the economic viability of small-scale local agriculture, which of course includes urban ag. Urban ag has many documented benefits to communities, including social health and economic impacts in addition to a multitude of environmental and climate benefits. Um, we really applaud the city of Katari for including urban ag in their general plan language and exploring a market garden ordinance. We encourage local food production of all scales and recognize that there is a need for flexibility with farming. It's not a nine-to-five job. Um, many of our local producers have jobs off-site that require them to farm outside of the proposed nine-to-five window. Furthermore, farming activities must often take place before the heat of the day or before the rain. Um, so for this reason, we really would advise that hours be expanded to account for the realities of the market gardens. Thank you.
Kay Rivers, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, I wanted to just bring attention to uh two of the, so page, um, on page three hundred. Um, the roosters requiring one acre and goats um uh also requiring, well, requiring half an acre. Um, I'm wondering if that's something that can be reconsidered. Um, I found a rooster ordinance in LA where it, they, they allow a maximum of two per one-half acre. So that would mean one for a quarter acre. And then um for the goat restriction in particular, um, it can be a really great fire deterrent to have even two on like a quarter acre. Um, could really help um to help with fire abatement here in our county. So I was hoping that um specifically in Katari, that um that be something that is looked at since it was um included in this um ordinance. Thank you.
Kimberlin Moffett, please go ahead. Kimberlin, you have the floor. It looks like you're muted.
How about now? Um, hi, awesome. All right, so I would agree, um especially with Jenny. This seems pretty restrictive um in a lot of ways, especially the two-day maximum. I was a bit disappointed that the council did not have a discussion on the two-day maximum as the planning commission had requested. Um, particularly because honestly, I enjoy your rich discussions. You have a lot of varied opinions and I would have liked to have heard that. Um, I'd like you to really consider what the goal of this particular ordinance is. Um, I'd also like to just make a comment that this ordinance seems to accomplish, to want to accomplish a lot and perhaps too much for one single ordinance. When you do that, a lot of times it starts diluting the conversation. So you're needing to talk about, you know, how the zoning regulation is going to be at the ranch as well as urban agriculture, as well as um public meetings. And so I would just look in the future to hopefully not have such a packed ordinance. Thank you.
Wendy Krupnick, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, and, and thank you, um Katari council members. Um, I'm the vice president of our local chapter of community alliance with family farmers. And I know that Evan Wiggs submitted some comments on our behalf, which um, which I completely agree with. And I won't repeat everything that was in that, that letter. I hope you all had a chance to read it. I do also want to second the comments that Jenny Blaker submitted, both in writing and just mentioned a little bit earlier. Uh, so I wanted to mention regarding the cost of the use permit. You know, I appreciate that the proposal would cut that cost in half. But still, uh, that's, it's still a significant amount of money. I don't know if any of you have done the math, you know, looking at the cost of fruits and vegetables and the tiny margin that one would, you know, be able to make, assuming one makes any profit at all, and how many years it might take to try to pay off the cost of that permit. But, you know, as I think Roy mentioned, it really would make it economically and feasible. You know, at, at most, I would request that you reduce the requirement to um, what did you call it, a minor use permit and half price of that, which still would be a fair amount of money. Um, regarding the hours restrictions, again, yeah, nine to five doesn't make any sense at all, whether it's for, for any of these categories, the market garden, the um urban ag or the community garden. You know, most community garden folks, they get into their community gardens, you know, in the evening after, you know, after work or after they bring kids home from school and feed them or whatever. Really needs to be, I don't think there needs to be any restriction at all. I think that the, there should be consistency with whatever the county's like noise ordinance or decibel level restrictions, something like that. But I don't think that any other restrictions are, are needed. Same thing with the days restriction, the days of sale. You know, if someone wants to have a little stand where they put out what they pick fresh each day, um, I don't see any problem with that. Um, a lot of that stuff's going to wilt. We don't have coolers, these aren't refrigerated. This is like a card table out in front, you know, on your driveway. So we should be encouraging fresh, um, you know, being able to offer things fresh every day. And lastly, I have a farm stand myself and I just closed it for this season. And I have to say, it was so gratifying that, um, you know, I'm, even though I'm diverse ag in the county, I'm in a neighborhood and that's who I'm serving with my farm stand. And I had one couple give me a gift and say they really appreciated the sense of community, the neighborhood gathering place. Another woman came, you know, a few days after I'd closed wanting some sugar pumpkins and said, you are my, you are my go-to farmer now. I'm learning about local agriculture. I'm learning what I can do to be more sustainable. And she just appreciated it so much. And that was just so gratifying to me. So as a, someone who's doing this, I just really hope that you will be more supportive and more encouraging. Thank you.
Merlin Coleman, you have the floor.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, thank you so much for all of the considerations. Um, it, it's really coming to mind um the sentence in the um, the, the plans for the city stating the word encourage, um, I think is in there. I don't have it in front of me, uh, to encourage urban agriculture. And to encourage um really means to help, to foster, to I mean, I think we all know what that word means. And it does seem that this is... What's being proposed is extra restrictive to that and goes counter to encouraging. And I would just really hope that there'd be a way for us to rethink all of this in that sense and in that it is the duty of the city, I believe, to be in compliance and be in harmony with what they have stated their missions are as a city, as a town. And that for the sake of the community, it's just could be really, really positive to have those things lifted in order to be able to have small farms, gardens, community gardens. It's like Wendy just said, really brings people together. Neighbors in walking areas being able to pick up their lemons on the way home from children, you know, often this will be children or elders or, you know, other people who are presenting what they have grown with pride and love. So I would like to encourage us to find a way to really find some freedom in this ordinance that will actually address the word "encourage", encourage this. Thank you.
There are no more hands. So Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. So let's close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. So I think most of this, the council's very familiar with, we've been over, but there are some new recommendations from the planning commission that staff would like us to weigh in. And I wonder if we could put from the slide, show the next-to-last slide back up that listed them, if that's possible. In our comments, whatever comments we make, I would ask everyone also, as you go one by one, just to speak to these items so staff knows and we all know where we're at on these. That would be helpful. And bear with me. And with that then, I'm gonna open, see who wants to speak. I see hands from Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Sparks to start.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. So I'll go through what's on the slide first and then I've got a bunch of other notes. First of all, I think we're pretty close here and I really appreciate all of staff's work in putting this together. I think establishing the market garden land use type is a big deal for us and really will go a long way towards encouraging people to produce food and share it and sell it to their neighbors. So the planning commission recommendation, number one, I'm all for. I think that language should be in there. Number two, I am glad to hear it's moot because I was gonna argue against it. So I'm glad there's an exception for those garden stands having to have business licenses. I support adding the childcare land use to OSR. I would not, at this time, because, to me, the biggest impact of what we're doing now is establishing the market garden land use and I'd like to focus most of our work on that. I would not mess with the urban agriculture piece like the produce stand modification that's proposed and, you know, remove the provision for sales of incidental items. I don't wanna mess with the current standards for produce stands, which go with the use permit, larger urban ag, for the most part. Okay, so that last one hits on the first of my notes. So the two-day standard, to my mind, originated with the Sacramento ordinance, which is the source of much of my thinking about what we're trying to do here. And in that ordinance, it's specifically two specific days, Tuesday and Saturday. And the point was to try to create some days when people in town would know that's the day to go looking for your neighborhood market stand. Try to create a culture in town of this is the day you go buy your produce from your neighbors. It's like, you know, we don't have a farmer's market down at the hub every day. Invite whatever farmers that want to come set up a table. We have a farmer's market and then everybody knows you can go get your produce that day. So as it stands, I think the two-day operating limit doesn't make sense. I would either open it up or I would specify two days. And I'm happy to just open it up and let producers generate those days as they wish, you know, to get together and say, hey, why don't we all open on Saturdays? And then everybody will know they can come around and get their produce on Saturdays. But I'd also be okay with specifying two days. I'm okay with the parking requirement. I think it's reasonable that there be two parking spaces within, you know, some reasonable walking distance of a produce stand, except I would not, I would prefer to remove that requirement in the denser urban zones. So I would say medium density residential and below, we drop the parking requirement, acknowledging that the whole point is to be able to walk to your neighbor and buy their herbs that they grow in their yard or whatever. So that'd be my preference, is to drop the parking requirement in the denser urban zones, as long as we understand the two parking spaces requirement to include nearby public parking spaces that are already existing. We're not requiring people to create new spaces. Setbacks, it seems silly to me to tell people they can't grow food in the five feet at the, you know, next to their fence. And so I'm not clear on the justification for that. I could accept something that's more like five feet from adjoining residential properties with a home nearby or something like that. If there was a reason to say that that was an issue, setbacks, I'm not understanding. Another piece that came up at the last meeting but isn't represented in the proposal is allowing roosters in OSR. And given that we've come to understand that roosters are essential for the proper functioning of a flock, I'm not clear why we didn't include roosters in OSR in this one. Finally, on the hours piece, I know the hours, I believe the language around the nine-to-five is only around use of mechanized equipment, but I agree with everybody that it has to extend beyond five for both community gardens and market gardens, well, and urban ag. So I would propose sunset as an end of mechanized equipment timing rather than 5:00 p.m. Thanks.
And if I could just confirm something, Councilmember Ford, because I wasn't clear.
Sure.
For item, the fourth bullet point here, where it says recommended approval of provision for sales of incidental items, such as bottled water, packaged snacks. I wasn't clear. Were you saying where you're at right now, you'd like to leave that in there rather than change that up? Or were you saying you didn't want it there? So you were...
I would leave it as staff have it in the proposal, which is to retain that.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thanks.
If I had to guess, I thought it was that. But I thought if I wasn't sure, maybe some of my colleagues... That's all right. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Let's see. Let's see, I believe, Councilmember Sparks, I believe you are next, and then Vice Mayor Hardy.
Thank you. I'll go through the planning commission recommendations. Item one, sounds good to me. Item two, I'm glad to know they don't need a business license. Item three, I'm in favor of. Item four, I would prefer that that be kept in there, that they can sell bottled water, packaged snacks, T-shirts, you know, some small floor space, I think that is fine. And if it makes it more economically viable, then that goes to the general plan direction that we encourage this. It's a way to help people make it viable. The last one, I, yes, I'm in favor of increasing the number of days. I have Santa Rosa plums. They go bad pretty much instantly. If I waited three or four days, they're rotten. So it makes sense to me to remove that two-days-of-the-week, two-days language, for sure. Okay, so I had some other comments, though. First of all, the nine-to-five hours, I'm in total agreement with a lot of the comments we had from the public that those are sort of an unreasonable limit because people need to be able to work when it's not too hot out and that can mean earlier than nine or later than five. It seems cruel to make it so that if somebody is not selling their produce, if they're just farming on their land non-commercially, they can work whatever hours they want. But if they wanna sell anything, then all of a sudden they have to work in the heat of the day. Doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to me. I recognize the intent of that hour limitation was to limit noise and to limit the nuisance of the noise to neighbors. I just strongly feel that we should deal with noise issues in the noise ordinance. And I know that we're having the noise ordinance come back up in the near future. And I think that imposing additional restrictions on agriculture uses that are not imposed on anyone else via our noise ordinance doesn't make sense to me. I personally think, I'll talk about this when this comes back under a different topic, but I think we should limit the use of leaf blowers and loud equipment to certain hours of the day. And I think that means an update in our noise ordinance. I just don't think that additional restrictions on agriculture to these very prescribed hours make sense. I think we should handle noise in the noise ordinance. I had a concern about the community gardens limitation on the extra workdays. So there was an exception for how many mechanized equipment, that there could be three weekdays a year when, you know, large-scale work could be done to prepare the site. And I don't think it's reasonable to require that to happen on weekdays. Community gardens are... I know from experience that a lot of workdays at community gardens happen on the weekend because everyone has jobs and are not able to come in on a Tuesday to do a lot of work because they're working at their paid jobs. So I don't really understand why the limit is to weekdays if it's only three times a year. If one of those days needs to be on a Saturday, I think that should be allowable. And we had really compelling explanation at our last meeting about the rooster at Veronda Fletti Ranch. So I would 100% be in favor of allowing roosters in open space residential zone. And last but not least, I just wanna say in general, I really agree with a lot of the comments that I would like to see this less restrictive so that we can really encourage local food production and not see it as a nuisance. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's go up to our list here. Vice Mayor Hardy, please go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna have a hard time because we don't have up on the list all of the things that have been added. I certainly can answer these planning commission ones, but it's gonna be hard to remember all of the additions that were made by Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Sparks. So we may have to do this more than once, Mayor.
Sorry.
So unless you have been keeping a list that you want...
I'm dotting them down. I think I have most of them. I think what I would encourage us all to do, speak to the things you support. If there's something that's been recommended that you don't support, that you remember, speak to that. And then at the end, if we're missing anything, all of us, and we see where we're going, perhaps we will double-check on a few things. That might work.
Okay, all right, I just...
Generally thinking, I think it's been increasing setbacks, allowing roosters over at Veronda Fletti, potentially playing with hours of operation, a recommendation for those three days a week that allow mechanized machines. Perhaps they could be in the weekend or Saturday at least. And again, the rooster, which I think we've heard. And a general interest in being less restrictive, although I think we certainly all talked that one plenty of times. That's what I've got for you.
Okay, so on the ones from the planning commission, I agree that the use of pesticides and the like should be in the management plan for the community gardens. I think it would be important for the community to know what things are being used within their community garden. I would think that the folks having plots in there would wanna know also. I am also glad to hear that the license is not in there and I would hope that we would have the produce stands and garden stands adhere to state and county regulations because I think that that's important. I am supportive of the child daycare center allowed in the OSR. And I think we've had enough discussion around what that means. It's not necessarily a daycare center, but that seems to be the best term to use without creating a whole nother one. As far as the incidental items, I agree with staff's recommendation. I don't see any reason to take that out. I don't have a problem. You know, when I think about if we wanna encourage people walking around and getting produce and things like that, heck, you may have been, you know, walking for a half-mile and be thirsty and you might be extremely happy that they have water to offer, folks. So I don't have an issue with that one. The number of days, I am okay with increasing it. I am a little concerned about making it a free-for-all and, you know, just willy-nilly because it could make a mess of things. I almost like the idea that Councilmember Ford put forth, you know, setting separate, specific days, then people could, you know, depend on that. At a minimum, I would think that we would want at least three days. That would allow for people to pick. And, you know, you pick one day, you sell the next day. You pick the next day, you sell the next day. So that would allow for that to occur. The setbacks, I can see that one both ways. I mean, I can live with that either way. I could see that certain things, so for instance, if you were growing, say, pole beans, you might want to use the fence to grow those. I mean, that might be something that you might have against a fence. So, I mean, I can kinda see that. The nine-to-five, you know, what we have here is this balance. We're trying to balance people's use of their homes and for whatever that means, for their families, and the ability to have agriculture and people growing and selling things. And it's a, there's a fine balance. And I hate to use this as an analogy, but I will. You know, it just takes one bad apple to ruin it for everyone. And unfortunately, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, well, let's not have any rules. Let's just let folks, you know, do their own thing. Unfortunately, that's, there's always a bad apple. And then when we have that bad apple, it's hard to pull it back. And without set standards, which is what we're doing, is creating standards to reduce the potential impacts on the residents. If we don't have those standards, then we don't have anything to fall back on when we have bad actors in our communities. And I hear everyone saying that, oh, well, this will be wonderful. But keep in mind that we might have someone who doesn't do the right thing. And we have had, you know, plenty of properties within the community that do other bad things. And then, you know, we're stuck with that. So I think some guidelines, and it's always good for us to revisit that if we find that there are certain things that don't work. I like that we created the market garden. I think that that helped with, you know, kind of that in-between thing. So I'm really concerned about the priority of this being, these are residential neighborhoods and their purpose is for people living in and enjoying their home. This is not a, the purpose of the property, as someone put it out in one of the letters we got, the purpose is not for there to be a business there in growing. That is really accessory to people living in their homes. The roosters in the OSR, I think that that's fine. I'm fine with that. The hours of operation, the proposal of sunset, which, you know, till seven o'clock kind of is what's in there. I think it's, I'd be willing to talk about that one. And did I miss any other ones, Mayor?
I think, what about the rooster at Veronda Fletti?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
All right, hang on, let me jot that down.
He can have his flock. And to the best of my knowledge, we have not had any issues with the rooster that's been there by the neighboring community members, to the best of my knowledge.
That is my understanding as well. I do remember that. I was both surprised and pleased to hear that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Very good. LaSalle, let's see, Councilmember... Very good. LaSalle, let's see, Councilmember Moore, are you ready to go yet, or did you want to hold off a minute? I see your hand up. Please go ahead.
Oh, thanks, Mayor Lemon. There's a lot of things that that I don't particularly care for in this. But there are some things that I think could make it work. Um, I'm okay with number one on planning commission recommendations. Um, obviously, number two is moot point, so that's okay. Uh, you all know my position on number three. I think that that's an unfair advantage for Sandy Bloom. Um, and I think that 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 does not pencil in with equity for some of the other um. Preschools, nursery schools around there and things like that. So that's my on that. Um, I don't think a produce stand should be selling bottled water or T-shirts or packaged snacks. That's not produce. That's not grown in your backyard. Um, we're trying to get away from plastic water bottles and a lot of people are carrying their own water bottles nowadays, so. I don't see the need for that. Um, I don't have an issue with maybe one more day per week. Uh, I'm probably leaning toward. Something akin to what Councilmember Ford said, maybe a Tuesday and a Saturday or something like that. You know, if if the um San Rosa plums are. Expiring that quickly, maybe pull them before they're ripe. So, you know, those are some of the main concerns I had on there. And um, yeah, if the roosters are now, I don't think it's an issue.
Alright, let's see. I think you've covered. What about the setbacks? Five foot setbacks that exist currently?
You know, if if you don't have a house right next door, or it's maybe it's open by there, I don't know that the five foot would be necessary. So maybe just uh wording that would say five foot setbacks if you're. Uh, butted up to a neighbor or something like that. Or to a residential.
I like this. Well, we have five people in this council, a lot of different ideas. Thank you.
Fifteen different ideas.
Exactly. Alright, well, first of all, I'm sure we're all sitting here tonight with a sense of deja vu because we've done this. We've talked about many of these issues over and over and. I'll just say in general, if anybody had actually really followed the rather long and certainly at times challenging discussions, they. Recognize that the result we arrived at wasn't driven. Was not driven just by working towards the sole interest of urban farming adherence, although. We are supportive of urban farming. But if actually trying to balance those interests with the understandable concerns of the rest of the public. Who may not be as supportive of a commercial operation in residential zones. It's trying to find that balance. And as with all compromises, at the end, fewer totally satisfied. I suspect none of us totally will be. But just my perspective is, and I shared today with somebody in the public who wrote me about this, is that when we have to represent. The interests of a community is diverse as Kattati. A solution that encompasses as best as possible, all concerns, it just has to be the result. And that's why we are where we're here today. So having said that, by the way, I will mention my camera's off, not because I'm shy, but I was having some bandwidth problems and I was losing some of your audio. And I think this seems to help, so. I'll just do this for a bit. Uh, so first of all, I am fine with most of what the. Planning commission has put forward. I'm fine with the specifications of number one. Also happy to see number two go. I would have certainly argued at least for our smaller. Garden stands, getting a business license would have been really problematic, so I'm glad that isn't there, although I'm supportive of the idea of. Making sure as best we can that everybody participating adheres to state and county regulations as far as safe retail food handling. Uh, I'm fine with the childcare. I get this is a very. Counterintuitive thing. And I get some of the concerns, uh, that if we want. People to enjoy and and use and be educated at this facility for this age group, this is helpful. And I would suggest, I understand the concern too, that perhaps it benefits one particular business, it it the current structure. But I think the city is open to taking proposals and classes from. Any group, any school, any business, anybody that has something they think they could put on it for on the flooding that might work. I would imagine there's some openness to that, so that might help with that reticence, which I certainly understand. Um. Let's see. I would agree with Councilmember Moore, my first take, and I'm counting, so I think I'm. So I think this is going to be okay. I think it's going to stay. But personally, my take was. I didn't get a good explanation why we needed bottled water or packaged snacks that weren't from the. Produce stand or a neighboring stand or a combine of stands or or non-food items. If this whole idea was to be healthy and and provide locally produced food. I don't see why we should allow things that, you know, you could get at seven eleven. But I'm hearing at least three people that might be okay with this, so. It might be okay. My preference would be at least we limited to things that these people actually make. If they package it. So it would be it. If it's non-food item, perhaps they have insurance, um, books, uh. How-to manuals. I have no idea. I'm fine with that sort of thing, certainly. Uh, I wouldn't be fine with increasing the number of days, oh, excuse me, hours of operation. We've been through this. Numerous times, and there's reasons why we settled on that. Uh, I agree, I heard a couple, at least two other people say they were open among the three days. I'd certainly do that. I like the logic of picking certain days of the week, but what I'm afraid of. Is for the people that actually do this, you know what would happen? Fifty percent of them those days would work, the other fifty percent those days wouldn't work. So I'd rather just add the extra date and let everybody pick. Particularly for our smaller market stand, garden stands. I'd like them to be able to pick the days they want to be open. I do think three is better because two seemed small. As far as hours of operation, I don't think. I really want to see those change either. And I don't really have to go through it again because we've been through this in great detail and we understand what we're trying to do here. Um, I am open. The mechanized equipment with a limit of three days. I have to admit, I did not quite catch it, it was only on the weekdays. If that was allowed to Saturday too, perhaps I wouldn't have a problem with that. It's. Perhaps it would be in for position for somebody enjoying a Saturday, but if it's only once or twice a year, they act, that actually happens. I think that's something we could all handle as a community. Uh. So that's what we have. Uh. So I'm going to ask everybody to correct me because I've been trying to get this. Now, I think I hear some consensus on the days a bit, but I'll double check back with all of you again. One more quick pass round, I think. Um, perhaps in the hours. I think we're interested in increasing the days. Oh, as far as setbacks. Uh, I was thinking I'd rather leave them. Again, there's a reason for them, but I would agree. I like Councilmember Moore's suggestion. If there's a neighbor, we leave. If you're abutting an empty lot, an open field. Perhaps it makes, it's reasonable to leave that open. I I don't think it's going to be. Make or break for any operation, but it does protect the interests we agreed to protect. And this is what we agreed to and voted on last time. So I think that's what I have. So what I would propose. Getting back up here. And I see hands from the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Ford, and that's perfect, because what I'm going to propose, we do one more time around. See if anybody has any. Corrections or additions to where we're at and uh, and then when we're done, I'll ask staff kind of to read back. What they're hearing, so we'd make sure we're all on the same page. So let me start with the Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to make a suggestion on the the three weekdays. I guess when I read it, I I read it as three workdays. Not any specific days. So my suggestion would be. Um, to change that to workdays and then that would cover whether they were during the week or on the weekend. I was just throwing that out there.
Granted, so so there's definitely, I've heard interest from a few people. There's interest in. Opening up that, I think. Anything else?
That's all right now.
Alright, did my uh. Uh, submit or uh consensus, did that sound like what you've heard so far? And I'm going to be asking everybody this, so I make sure I didn't miss anything or guess, hear something wrong.
Um, Mayor, just uh one quick thing. So uh. Did you, did you mention roosters, your position on roosters in OS in the Veronda Fletti Ranch?
I hope I did. If I didn't, um. I wasn't, I didn't like the idea earlier, but seeing they've been successful for several years there and hearing the necessity for this, uh. And the fact that we, if there are problems, we as a city could certainly deal with that. I'm fine, yes. And I think that's an overwhelming consensus I've heard. Everybody's fine with. I forget, what was the name of the, somebody actually told us the name of the rooster? Well, I I knew the rooster was going to stay when I heard that. You humanize him, that's it. So I think whatever his name is, he's he's good to stay from what I'm hearing.
I want to say it's Charlie, but I could, I maybe I'm just making that up. Um. I, the only other thing that I heard that was mentioned by some of the council members, uh, actually it was Councilmember Ford. Had a comment about parking, so.
Parking.
Yeah, so maybe when we get back around to everyone's.
Yeah, I I missed that one, sorry. So I missed that. I bet John and Susan missed it. Um, I think Laura mentioned it. So will we come back around? If you could just weigh in that too, folks, and. So with that, I'm going to jump next to Councilmember Ford and then Councilmember Sparks.
Thanks, um, yeah, the the parking, um, I'll I'll start with that. Um, my suggestion was that we remove the parking. Requirement in denser urban zones.
Okay.
But I think it's a, it's it's almost a moot point because you would be hard pressed to find a a street facing place to put a garden stand that is with, not within a hundred feet of two parking spaces. So. I, as long as we don't require the the operator of the garden stand to be the one providing the spaces, I think it's, it's not a big deal for me. On setbacks, I I I like um Councilmember Moore's suggestion that we condition, say, five feet. When a residential structure is located within thirty feet of the property line on the adjoining parcel. Or something like that. So give it, you know. We, like, it doesn't make any sense to me to require a five foot setback from, you know, the neighboring vacant lot or something like that. Uh, so, uh, the other thing is, I I don't remember discussing and and agreeing to nine AM to five PM. Um, ability to work on in your garden. So I'm I'm not, uh, if if I agreed to that, it, I I must have been.
I think it was more of a two-two. I think it was more of a three-two, but we.
Oh, that could be.
Over quite deeply, and that was the the consensus, but it wasn't a full majority. That's true.
Okay, I would, I would need to look back at minutes for that because I sure don't remember a vote on this ordinance before. Um, and and it just doesn't. Like a lot of people have said, it doesn't make sense to me to limit. Work with your, uh, I don't know, your rototiller or your weed whacker. Only if you're somebody who's operating um. A produce stand while your neighbor who's just growing for all their friends. Doesn't have the same restriction. So I'm, I agree with Councilmember Sparks that the noise ordinance is the place to handle noise issues. And restricting use um is a problematic way to do it, and especially in these where. These market gardens are explicitly not primary land use. They're not. Uh, anybody's um primary occupation, which means most people aren't home till five. And the Sacramento ordinance, for instance, is till seven PM. I could live with that. I was proposing sunset as a way to make it go earlier when it got darker earlier, but. Uh, it it just seems to me like five PM is an arbitrary and and. Unworkable with the way our lives are structured, uh, time timeframe. Thanks.
Alright, so I'll ask everybody beyond parking. Also, the one question I'd like everyone to give me a little more clarity on. Are you okay with the nine to five operating hours and use of mechanized equipment, or would you prefer to extend that? And and if so, what's your proposal? I think we need to get that nailed down. So with that, I'm going to go with Councilmember Sparks, who may have some input for me.
Thank you. I'll try to hit everything. Um, setbacks. Uh, I agree with the. The language um that Councilmember Ford just. Um, brought up and and uh Councilmember Moore proposed also that if there's a residential structure, some distance from. The property line, then a five foot setback, and otherwise I don't think it's necessary to have that setback. Um, for the hours, I agree that that a nine to five is too restrictive. Um, I would like us to see more stringent requirements. Around noise and our noise ordinance. I think there are a lot of noise polluters in the neighborhoods. Who have nothing to do with agriculture that need to, and that needs to be addressed, and our noise ordinance needs to be enforceable. So I would suggest that we strengthen our noise ordinance greatly and. Not have hours in this particular ordinance at all, but just handle it in the noise ordinance. Uh, parking, I. I was okay with the one to two parking spots as long as um the language was clarified that that in the roadway, you know, on the on the road was okay. I think that was everything I was requested to to talk about. Um, there were were two more things though, real quick. Um. We discussed this earlier tonight, but I just wanted to make sure it got on the list that we clarify the language on packet page three oh five. As to what is a development. That would require a trigger all this public, public meeting language, because we even heard in some comments tonight, some confusion that. That urban ag uses would trigger that, so I'd just like to see the language clarified on that. Um, when I spoke the first time, I I just spoke generally about removing some of the limits on the hours, and I don't think I clearly. Stated that I also thought that the market garden hours. Of nine AM to seven PM. I'd like to see that morning extended a little earlier. Maybe to eight AM, and I'm really sorry to add something new. I should have said this the first time around, and Mary Lemon, you're doing an. Amazing admirable job keeping track of all this, so I'm sorry to make your life harder.
There's a reason also I have my cameras turned off.
I can't see you groaning at me. Um, but the reason is, if if you're going to work in the morning and you want to set out your gar, set out your garden stand before you leave. It's going to be hard for you to set that stand out at nine o'clock, and then if you're working a typical nine to five, it's going to make you late at work. Just logistically, how are you going to get that? Stand out at nine AM and not any earlier. I'd love to see that hours extended on that market garden stand to perhaps eight AM instead of nine AM. And then one last thing, um. The roosters, we heard some good discussion last week about how. If there isn't a rooster, the hens will take over the rooster's job and start crowing and and doing things like that, so. Uh, and we had a public comment tonight, um, asking about extending the possibility of roosters. So. As it is right now, it seems like we can't have a rooster in residential very low density at all. Um, and I I think if we're going on the basis of some of the scientific information we received about how roosters function and keep a flock healthy. It would make sense for um half acre parcels to be able to keep a rooster. Alright, that's everything.
So now we have the addition of roosters on half acre parcels. Alright, but that would be, that's kind of would be a separate zoning change, but let's just put it out there. So I do think, so I think we can kind of take the issue of parking off the table. I think we can take the issue so far of uh the setback. I think Councilmember Moore's suggestion and the language that. Councilmember Ford gave seem to be acceptable to everybody. So we're dialing down to, and correct me if I'm missing something. Generally, hours of operation, again, nine to five versus longer, uh. Mechanized uses and now potentially increasing roosters. So tell me about hours of operations, folks. Tell me about roosters. And, oh yeah, did we have a consensus? Let me check with you, Councilmember Sparks. I think this was your idea, actually, going to opening up the weekends, right, for mechanized equipment to those three days?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I I think, and I'll check back with everybody, but I think I'm hearing consistence more than three people saying yes to that now. So I think we've kind of got that one settled. So let's see who's up to speak next. I'm not seeing anybody's hands, so I'll kind goose this long and just say, I'm going to be uh. Appallingly unmovable on the nine to five. Uh. I don't see the need to increase that. I don't see the need to do it earlier. I just can't see this being a big problem. Because I am just market gardens. And I'll tell you exactly what I see and what I wanted to see, and what I think a lot of us wanted to see, because I just saw it this last few weeks in my neighborhood. We have a new uh neighbor moved in a family about a year ago. Height of the pandemic, and they had two young, very young teenage boys. Kind of fun to see them riding around the neighborhood on little push scooters with their dogs and stuff. And getting to meet the family, they're very interested in organic gardening. They have a garden in their backyard. And uh, the youngest son, Elijah, Mr. Elijah Wong is a young entrepreneur now. They're raising hens back there, and he's every once in a while out in front with his mom with a little car table, selling eggs. Uh, so now that's where we're buying our eggs. And I think this is exactly the type of thing we wanted to see. And I think for most cases like this family, there's never going to be issues with hours are going to be problematic. But like Vice Mayor Hardy, the reason I'm. But like Vice Mayor Harvey, the reason I'm supporting this is because I know from experience in life and on council. That the reason we have rules, it's not for ninety-five percent of the people. It's for that five percent or less that will just push the envelope and kind of ruin it for everybody. And we see that happen consistently. And that's why we have these. So, um, I'm okay with the rooster at Vonda Fletti. I don't really want the, the door to roosters all over the community and residential areas on small places, uh, as small as a half of an acre. I think that's problematic. Myself, but I'd like to hear from the rest of you. Um, I think those are the main two things we're dealing with. So let's see. I'll ask if we could have council member Harvey and council member Moore chime in on the issue of roosters and the hours and see where we're at. And who would like to jump in? Don't be shy. I see Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
All right, so, um, on the times, there's actually in the market garden, there's two different times. So one has to do with the equipment, which is nine to five. And the other happens to be with the garden stands, which is nine to seven, which we expanded the last time to allow for people that are working, you know, to, to have that, that bandwidth there. And, um, I understand what council member Sparks is saying about the noise and the noise ordinance. But it's not just the noise. I mean, it's the dust, it's spraying, it's, it's whatever other things, you know, that you're using. It's not just noise. So I'm, I'm concerned about, um, us opening that up to be nothing. No limit of hours. That does concern me because I think we could be impacting, you know, uh, other people's use of their, um, of their properties. So from the equipment perspective, I think I'd rather leave it like that for now. And if that's a problem, you know, we could, we can, you know, kind of address that later. And I think the garden stands, are you suggesting mayor that we cut the garden stands back?
I was talking about the equipment usage, though I'm, I think the nine to seven makes sense and I, I believe we're all fine with that. I'm sure people.
So it's not that, it's the nuisance aspect, not just noise. If it was just noise. I get where, um, council member Sparks is going, um, but it's not. And as far as, uh, changing, um, the roosters, um, I happen to have rooster next to me. Um, and it's not always very pleasant. So, um, I, I, I think unless you really live next to that a lot, um, I, I don't think that you really, um, understand. I understand the philosophy around, you know, having the rooster be there for the hens. But, you know, you, we start getting into these smaller and smaller lots. It, it, you know, it, it could be quite problematic. And you could all, all of a sudden ruin a whole neighborhood if everybody started having roosters. Um, and as we've seen over the years, unfortunately, um, people get the roosters and then they disturb the families that get them. And we all know where we have found the roosters being dumped, which is a horrible thing, um, to happen to them. Because, you know, they, they get a little noisy. So I would not want, um, to change, um, that other than the RR at this point. So was there anything else you wanted my feedback on?
I think that nails it down. Let me ask council member Moore, could you weigh in next? So that'll be all of us speaking on the first, the hours we're looking at for market, uh, the market gardens operations nine to seven. But the use of equipments in, on the property is nine to five. What, what are your thoughts on that? And then roosters in other areas and smaller areas.
I think the hours as stated with the, um, operations at nine to seven with the equipment. I mean, the sales, the equipment at nine to seven, is that correct? And then sales at nine to five?
It's actually sales from nine, yeah, it's nine to seven. The equipment's nine to five, slightly reduced because it more, might be more impactful of noise during somebody's early morning hours or an early dinner. I, I assume.
I would be okay with that. And then regarding the roosters, um, I think just allowing the one in the OSR would be fine. Want to change anything to add additional roosters?
So everybody likes Charlie, but that's about it. And we think that's his name. We're not sure. All right, um, so I think we're kind of coming there. So I do see a hand now. I'm going to wrap around for one third time to council member. Hopefully last first, council member Sparks.
Thank you. Uh, just a clarification. I, I had mentioned in my last comment, Mr. Mayor, um, extending the market garden stand hour from nine to seven to eight AM to seven PM. And if everyone heard and understood that and was saying, no, I prefer to keep it at nine AM, that's fine. But I wasn't sure if, if everyone understood that that's what I was proposing.
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we check? Let's do a quick, um, and see if I, I see my bandwidth. Let me see all your faces at once. And anybody who would like to increase that hour from nine to seven to eight to seven, let me see the thumbs up, please. Uh, and actually just do a, raise your hand on your speaking thing too. That'll be helpful. So I have council member Sparks, of course, council member Ford. Wait a second longer. And I think we're sitting at nine to seven, it looks like. Although, you know, I will point out. I do agree with one thing personally, even if I'm not here to do it next year, you're going to be looking at this noise ordinance. And perhaps that might be a time to roll, you might have the opportunity to some roll some things in there. And then perhaps you may readjust this in a year. Um, that might be workable. Um, so that's a suggestion. All right. I wonder if I could have at this point, council member Harvey, I see your hand. Do you have something, one more thing you want to add?
Well, I, I just would, would like us to kind of, uh, try this out. And then, you know, revisit it. And, and if it, if it becomes, you know, an, an issue where we're, we're getting a lot of feedback. Um, that says those times aren't, aren't working, then, then we address it from that. It's always harder to, uh, take things back once they're already out there. So, uh, I mean, as a starting point, it, you know, it feels like this could be a good starting point. And if it becomes problematic, then there's no reason that we can't revisit it. Which is kind of what our job is to keep revisiting things, you know, a, as time goes on. Just a thought.
All right. And, and that's certainly true. I wonder if I could ask Mr. Obit and put you in a difficult position of all of our going back and forth. Were you able to co-light that? Can you give us a rough readout and what staffs take on the direction you're getting?
I can, uh, yeah, sure, mayor. I can take a first shot and I'm sure Autumn or Noah can correct me if I, if I got off track on something. But starting with the slide that's up right now, the planning commission recommendations, the consensus. Uh, the majority that I, uh, got was, uh, yes on one, that's including, um, these things in the, the community garden management plan. Number two is a, basically there's no need for a business license since it's exempt, so that's not really an issue. Three, adding the, um, adding the daycare to the OSR. The remove, removal of incidental items, um, the consensus was do not remove that provision. So, um, just allow, continue to allow incidental items capped at ten percent as is shown in the ordinance. Increasing the number of days per week that garden stands may operate. The consensus I seem to get, um, from two, was from two to three to bump that up to three days a week. Um, all right. So on some of the other items, uh, parking didn't seem to be an issue. For setbacks, um, it sounded like the consensus was no setback. But if there's a structure, residential structure within thirty feet, then a five foot setback would be the rule. Um, but in other words, if there's a vacant lot or there's structures farther away than thirty feet from there, there'll be no setback.
I believe that's what I heard.
Or commercial use.
Back in with all the council too after staffways in this to make sure we're all seeing the same thing.
Okay. Um, roosters seem to be everyone, like you said, mayor, everyone likes Charlie and OSR. So that was okay for the flooded ranch. Um, no change in hours seemed to be the majority at least. Um, community gardens opening, uh, or clarifying the language, so it's not just weekdays. But, um, up to three days for the heavy mechanized, I think, equipment is what that provision was talking about. And in terms of changes, I think that was it. Um, no roosters nor RVL, just keep them in RR. That's what I have. Unless Autumn or Noah, you have something else that maybe I missed along the way?
Uh, no, that correspond, corresponds with what I heard. Um, I, I actually, I would like to clarify one, one item though. The, the change, so to allow those three days a year, uh, for heavier equipment use for site soil preparation. I thought that I had heard it possibly floated not just for community gardens, but for market gardens as well. And I, I would just like to ask if we can, did, if, if I was, um, if I'm correct or if I misheard that.
Why don't we double check? I'm going to ask everybody that is fine with having that include market gardens. I'm thinking most smaller lots, single family homes that might be doing market gardens. I'm going to be shocked if they're needing to pull in a lot of heavy equipment. Sure hope not. But I'm personally fine. Let's see. So if you're okay with having that encompass both those uses, please give me a thumbs up right now. And I'm seeing one from council member Sparks, council member Moore. So council member Ford, please weigh in and council member Harvey, or Vice Mayor Harvey, let me know if you're okay.
Sorry, you said thumbs up, so I was doing thumbs up, but I'll raise my hand.
Either one works. You know, I'm, I'm limiting my video, you know, bandwidth out here. Much like the weather, so, uh.
I was also doing a literal thumbs up, so yes.
That's my favorite way to do it. If I could keep all of your five videos up on the screen, it's much better. I'm sorry, uh, it's the gods of the internet. Sometimes they give, sometimes they take away. All right, uh, Autumn, was there anything else?
Oh, sorry, not to me.
Yeah, uh, ma- mayor, sorry. There was one other sort of random thing that I forgot to mention that seemed to be a consensus item. And this isn't about urban act, but this is the other part of the ordinance regarding, um, when neighborhood meetings are required for specifically discretionary project disturbing more than one acre to make sure it's clear that it's not an agricultural operation, but some sort of development. So coming up with some language to just make sure it's clear.
And if, if, uh, I, I think we all, nobody raised a concern with that. I believe council member Sparks, you asked for that. I'll ask this time, I'll go differently. If anybody has an issue with that, please raise your hand. We can discuss it. If it's okay with everybody, we're just going to let that go for it because I think more clarity usually doesn't hurt. Makes a longer document, but it helps in the long run. And I'm not seeing any hands, so it looks like that's good. All right. So great. So let's me jump back. I see a hand from the Vice Mayor. Please go ahead.
I have a more process question. Because we've done all of this, does this mean that we have to start all over again and have another reading of this or? I'm, I'm asking because.
Mr. Mayor, you do not need to start over. You can introduce the, uh, ordinance with the changes you're proposing. I don't think any of these need to go back to the planning commission.
I figured you would have jumped in, Mr. Barker, if we were getting too far afield and given us that guidance, but it never hurts to ask. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So with that, uh, since that's discussion, I'm not seeing any more hands go up. We've worked through most of our issues. I'd be looking for someone to introduce an ordinance. And council member, wait a minute, I see, I see a hand from council member Ford.
No, I was, I was volunteering to introduce, to move to introduce the ordinance.
Please do.
Go for it, man.
Trying to beat Vice Mayor Harvey to the punch one time. So I moved that the council introduce an ordinance, uh, of the city of Katari adopting amendments to title seventeen land use of the Katari municipal code to support urban agriculture by amending title seventeen land use. Uh, and many subsections, uh, and changing the zoning of one seventy-five West Sierra Avenue. The Veranda Fletti Ranch property from neighborhood low density to open space recreation.
All right. Do we have a second, please?
I would second that, but can I ask the maker of the motion a question?
I would imagine so.
Does your motion include all of the changes that we talked about tonight?
It does, it does. Sorry, I should have specified, yes.
That's okay. I just wanted to be clear. And then my second also includes that too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. So we do have a motion in a second. I'm going to ask if we can have the city clerk, if we can have a roll call vote. And did I see somebody speaking up? Was there something?
Yeah, mayor, sorry. Just one quick thing before you guys actually take the vote. So as we were going through the items, um, when I was talking about the no setback, um, except a five foot setback if within thirty feet of residential structure, I think one of the council members started to say something about commercial too, I think, right?
You were saying, for instance, if there's no structure nearby, and I was just saying, or a commercial structure nearby, that would not trigger a setback. So your, your language is fine.
Residential structure, got it. Okay, thanks.
All right. So we have that clarification. I will ask the city clerk, if we could have a roll call vote for this, please.
Council member Moore?
Yes, yes.
Council member Ford?
Yes.
Council member Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. And I'll take just a moment and thank everybody. Uh, this has been a long, and as we all do, arduous process for us, for staff, the community. And I appreciate everyone's efforts and goodwill and willingness to find middle grounds that we could all try to live with together as a group for the benefit of everybody in the community. I think that's a really good thing. It's difficult to do. Sometimes, gosh, it's not fun, but the end process is usually worthwhile. So thank you for those efforts. I, I do appreciate it personally. I will say that. So that concludes our public hearings. Let me check with the council. It's now twenty minutes to nine. We've been here since six. Uh, I'm going to see if I can see your faces for a moment. Do we want to take a short ten minute break? Do we get to the rest of the meeting? Well, I saw a couple of quick thumbs up from council members Ford, Sparks and Moore. All right, it is. Let's get back here at ten minutes to nine. We'll give ourselves about eleven minutes here, gang, okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank everybody. I appreciate it. We are back right at eight fifty on the nose. That's pretty impressive, council. As we all know, usually we take breaks. It's hard to round everybody back up. So with that, we have completed our public hearings. We are now to item twelve, which is our regular agenda. We have three on the agenda tonight, and our first item, um, twelve A is a uh update on our city fee schedule that we asked to come back. And I believe City Manager Obit might be presenting this.
I am, yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So um, well, history on July twenty-seventh back in twenty twenty-one. The city council adopted a um comprehensive update to the city fee schedule, the first really in many years. So it was a pretty top-to-bottom um update. And um, a lot of moving parts. And after discussion of, um, it was a pretty lengthy discussion, the city council directed changes to the following fees. Um, the electrical, electric vehicle charger installation fee, which I'll discuss more in a minute. Uh, water, the cost of water turn-on fees and the amount of deposits for renters and homeowners being the same. So um, then on September twenty-seventh, um, as you know, more recently, just of this year in twenty twenty-two, the city council adopted an updated fee schedule, which goes into effect sixty days following adoption, which would mean that it goes into effect on November twelfth here um later this week. But prior to going into, into effect, the city council asked staff to follow up on a couple of um building permit fees. So the electric vehicle chargers um was back as a question, and then um park use fees specifically about how events like the farmer's market are handled in the new park fee structure. So um, with regard to electric vehicle charging, um, after the uh meeting in September, staff looked back at this, into this issue and discovered that the city council had actually already directed a reduction in this fee last year, um, back when this new fee schedule was adopted and um had set it at two hundred dollars for residential chargers. Um, the other fee changes that I mentioned earlier were implemented as directed. It's just this resident, this residential charger um fee did not get caught and uh what got posted. Um, I will, I will point out too that um the fee schedule has a residential charge, uh, a residential electric vehicle um charging permit fee. And that's for under fifty amp circuits. So basically it's standard level two, like garage kind of charger. Um, there's also a uh commercial version of that under fifty amp, and there's a commercial greater. So greater than fifty amp is more like a, you know, a level three kind of fast charger. That's a much more involved electrical type um project to get something like that put in. Um. The commercial ones usually aren't standalone. They're usually, you know, part of other projects, but I just want to, as I'm, as we're talking about, I just want to point out that the fee that was reduced last year by the council is the residential charger fee, not the commercial charger fee of the same amperage, or of course, the higher one. Council could, you know, could direct changes out if so desired, but um as it stands now, that's how it is. And then um, just when we discovered this oversight, we have been looking for building permit records to see if we'd issued any of those permits since uh twenty twenty-one when this, when the coun- council originally directed us to change the fee. Today, we haven't found any, but we're still searching through um especially bundled, bundled permits. So um where the work is, is bundling, bundling into a bunch of other work just to make sure that we didn't miss it. If we do find any, we will refund the difference in the permit cost to anyone that's pulled from those permits. Um, so that's uh, that's where we stand on um EV charging permit fees. And then with regard to park use fees, so prior to, just a little bit of history here, prior to twenty twenty, the park fees for events, and this is um for Mark, for the uh, the uh, um, the, the market fee that we're talking about, I guess, the farmer's market fee. It's, it would fall into the fifty to two hundred and fifty attendee category. And um, prior to two thousand, or twenty twenty, that fee was a hundred and fifty dollars per, per event, or really for them as per week. And um, that did include, um, well, so a hundred and fifty per, per week or per event. And um, in our adopted park use policy, if you're a nonprofit and you also don't charge admission to the event, which is um how the farmer's market is viewed, yeah, there's a fifty percent discount, right? So that take, it took that hundred and fifty dollar fee and made it seventy-five dollars per week for the farmer's market. And that also included other things that um were sort of part of the deal, which included uh free storage of, you know, all season of things behind the stage for them, as well as public works, hanging banners and signs and that kind of thing. Uh, with the onset of COVID, city council adopted resolutions, uh, twenty twenty, thirty-one and fifty-nine, and uh, that included a waiver of park use fees for community events. And so that's a broad variety of different types of events, but it did include events like the farmer's market. So over the last two, um, they've paid zero dollars in fees due to that waiver for economic development. Under the updated fee schedule, as it current, currently stands, the cost of this event is two hundred dollars um using the fifty percent nonprofit allowance in the park use policy, which is obviously still there. The actual cost of the farmer's market would be a hundred dollars per week um in twenty twenty-three, including all the things that I mentioned earlier that kind of come along with that for them. Um, the uh, I also put in the staff report, it's just as a, as a reference point, some other um park rental fees for similar sized events in other cities that we could find. Um, Santa Rosa, they're about a hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, Petaluma is a hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Corner Park is a hundred and thirty-nine dollars for a four-hour block, um, except for some areas. Um, Healdsburg is a hundred and thirty-three dollars, but it limits, it's limited to a hundred people. And then I think you go into a special event permit fee, which is significantly more expensive. Um, some of these chart, cities also do charge a twenty-five-dollar application fees. That would be on top of those numbers. And then um, we're not aware of any of these cities having any provisions that would allow them to reduce those fees for, like I said, in our park use policy, we have a nonprofit um provision if they don't charge, charge for admission that we can reduce it fifty percent. We're not aware that any of these other cities have such a provision like that. Um, the only, um, the only events that we're aware of that they can hold at a reduced and really like a no cost would be if it's a city-run event. Those other cities do have, do have um the ability for a city-run event to have an exception, but otherwise we're not aware of any. So. Um, so that's it. I would be happy to answer any questions and go from there.
Well, that's a perfect segue. Let's see if anybody has any questions for the city manager on this. And I see a hand from the Vice Mayor. Please start.
Um, I have a question. Um, when we reduce these fees, say for the electrical vehicle chargers and, and even the park fees, where does the difference in funding come from? Because the fees are based upon what the cost is for us to do it. We're, we're not allowed to charge more than, than what our costs are. Where does the difference come from?
Uh, for building, like these kind of building inspections, it's just, it's effectively the general fund is where it comes from.
So we're subsidizing with general fund money to do this. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. I'll ask the rest of the group one more time if anybody has a question right now. And if not, let's take this out to public comment and bring it back to the council.
Thank you, Mayor Landman, speaking to our attendees tonight. Excuse me. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. We'll bring it back to the council and see if, have any comments or direction. And I seem to remember from the first time we saw this, the direction was to go ahead and authorize this, but if we saw anything we needed to change, we could change it. So that would be certainly be a point of discussion if anybody wanted to. And let's start with Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for looking into uh the, the cost of the farmer's market. Um, that all seems totally reasonable to me. Um, and I appreciate the time you spent to look into it. So I'm supportive of, of this new fee schedule. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? If not, I will say, yeah, I want to, I'm supportive, obviously, of the reduction for residential EV charges. I'm glad we caught that. And because of that, I want to thank Neil Hancock, regular member of the public who attends for raising the issue, and Councilmember Sparks, who actually reiterated it when we came back to council. That's, I said earlier, it takes five of us all together with all our differences to get these things done. It also helps to have a lot of members of the public to bring things. So we can see that worked out again this time. So thank you, everybody. So I believe that if we're not making any changes, then there's no action on this required tonight. City Manager Obit. Uh, I'm seeing satisfaction and no hands going up from my colleagues.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's correct. There's no action needed if uh, the only thing, the only change, really, the only change we made was the EV charger, but that was directed last year by council. So.
Yeah, and that was a good one to catch. So great. So that will then conclude item twelve A and bring us down. Item twelve B. And this is a recommendation for us to discuss uh the committee assignment process and provide verbal direction to staff. I'll, this is Councilmember Sparks's item she asked to bring. So after we come back from public comment, I'll ask her if she'd like to lead it off and, and sell us on it, uh, so to speak. But with that, let's have the staff report if we could. But with that, let's have the staff report if we could.
Sure, Mayor. So I'll try to be brief here, but so committee assignments, I did, and, and I will, I just, a quick apology in the packet. I just threw in the assignment table, both the summary sheet and then the more detailed one. Just as a reference for the conversation, I thought I got the most recent one from our legislative management system, but it turned out we had one for some of that that appropriate some more recent changes.
I was, you really worried me. I thought I had really missed two years worth of RRWA meetings and I wasn't sure how I'd face you all. So I'm glad we caught that too.
Yeah. So apologies, but that's not the point of the conversation, but I, I use apologies because it puts it out in the public and just causes confusion. So. All right. So each year, as you all know, the city council reviews assignments to committees, commissions and regional assignments that are directly appointed by the city council. And this, so this is done a couple of ways in terms of the timing of it. If it's an off election year, this is normally done in December. Where the assignments are reviewed each year. When there's, when it's an election year and we have, you know, new council members coming on, it's typically done in the first meeting in January. And when discussing these appointments, as I just mentioned, that we provide the summaries of assignments and appointments that are included in the packet, just as a guide to allow the council members to have an informed conversation about what the assignments are. All the assignments, not even, you know, all the different assignments that the city is involved in, but also the various, you know, an estimation of various hour commitments as well as when the meetings are held. Because the scheduling of meetings is often a barrier for some people. If it's the middle of the day, for example, work, that sort of thing. And and then I just will say like, you know, you know, I, historically, the process, you know, that I've seen is that, you know, the incumbent council members will have certain assignments and you count, as new council members come in in January, they, they typically become alternates on assignments that they're interested in. And then, you know, eventually the incumbent, for whatever reason, might step away from that assignment. And then the alternate is typically the first in line for that assignment if they're interested. And that's the, I'll just say, that's the process I've normally seen in my time here. For obvious reasons, the Brown Act does limit discussion around appointments prior to city council meetings, such that no more than two city council members can discuss a particular appointment in advance. And I won't get into it, but I get the basic, I think the basic request here was that rather than it happening in one meeting, that it'd be a two-step process where the appointments are discussed without action. And then the second meeting, the next available council meeting, they come back and, uh, council would come back and then make appointments at that point. If, if it is a election year, so right now, after new council members come on, like I said, this normally happens the first meeting in January. If a two-step process were to be instituted, then it would just mean that the first meeting in January would be a non-action conversation. Presumably the second meeting in January would be the one where actions taken, which would, you know, just result in a slight delay till the end of January, which for appointments. But that's the only, the only real impact is just a delay in appointments there in terms of timing to regional bodies. And with that, I'll just end there and be happy to answer any questions if I, if I can.
Let's see if we have any questions. I'll invite my colleagues to raise their hands. And I'm looking at the list. I'm not seeing any questions. I saw, I think we have some clarity in this. Why don't we go to public comment and then we'll bring it back and we'll let council member Sparks kick this off and we'll have a discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Kay Rivers, please go ahead.
Hi. I would like to comment that I love this idea. I wonder if it couldn't start in December rather than having to delay in January. For example, in the December 13th meeting, after we've been sworn in, Sylvia and I have been sworn in, I wonder if we couldn't start this discussion of which committee seats are available and who's interested in what. And just, you know, even, you know, for example, i- in my case, you know, I am still working and, and I teach up in Healdsburg, so it would be difficult for me to attend, you know, weekday AM type meetings. So just having that discussion all together in a public forum, I feel would be, you know, more transparent as well with any Katati residents that might be interested in knowing who is going to be on which committee or might have suggestions or input into that. And then we could make those decisions and then put it into place in that first meeting in January. So there wouldn't have to be a delay if, if we could potentially do it that way. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring it back. I will mention my understanding of the agenda item for swearing in the new council members. It will be the last thing on the agenda on December 13th. So there will be no discussions or action items for the new council as a group to be able to address. So I'm not sure if that's quite workable, but never hurts to throw ideas out. That's how we get these things done. So let's bring it back and go to council member Sparks.
Thank you. So the reason that I proposed this was that I thought it would be nice, since we're going to have such a new council composition, to have a chance for every person to state what their availability is and which committees they're interested in serving on, so that then we can come back and have some time to all think about that. I'll kind of look at the logic problem of who's on what committee and think about it and then come back and, and make a decision at a later date. There are going to be so many openings with some of our longstanding members leaving that it'll be a little more involved than usual in terms of doing the, the appointments. I did have a question because I do think that's a good idea to try to start the conversation in December. Is the, is that a, if we could ask the city attorney, does it, wh- wh- where does that come from that we can't have any discussion items? If we're not taking any action, but we're just having a discussion, why couldn't we do that after the swearing in? I'm curious.
I, I'm not aware of any legal reason why it couldn't be done that way. I think maybe it's just the tradition in Katati to do it that way. I, I don't know. Maybe Damian can help me with.
My interest as a mayor is seeing one council per meeting. December 13th will be the last meeting of this council. When we come back in January, will be the first meeting of the new council.
Is, I don't quite understand. I don't understand the rationale that we couldn't have a brief discussion. Because there would be a real advantage to that in that it would allow us to have a transparent process and wouldn't delay our appointments any.
Well, we, we can discuss that further as we go, but please continue with why, why we should consider this. And then we'll go through everybody and see what our reactions are and see where we're at.
Well, I, I think I pretty much said my piece. I think it would really increase transparency, provide a better experience for the incoming council members in terms of not having, I feel so frantic that we're getting all this information all at once about who wants what and we have to decide right now. I think just slowing it down makes the whole process a little less stressful, a little more transparent. I think it would be helpful.
All right. Well, let's see. Why don't we do a round robin with everybody? Whoever wants to jump in first and just share your thoughts on this. We'll start. I see a hand from the vice mayor. Go ahead. Vice Mayor Harvey.
So a couple of things. One, if we wait until January, we do have the possibility of no one attending meetings that are monthly meetings. If we don't see people till the end of January, they won't be able to be available until February. So we could have no one representing us because you have to be assigned to it. So that is problematic to not have, not have an assignment there. As far as understanding what the assignments are, a couple of things. One, as Damian has put, there's information that is in the packet about when the dates are and the times are. There's nothing that has ever kept anyone from attending, especially in this environment where we have Zoom now, from attending these meetings to get the feel, feel for them. So if you have a, a certain interest, you could always do that. Damian, I believe, as part of his general onboarding for new council members, kind of goes through council assignments, you know, and if you have any questions about what that is, you know, certainly you can ask them. There's no reason that you can't ask the person that has that, you know, well, what is this about? It's not, you know, asking for that assignment, but it's just, you know, tell me a little bit about this so I understand, you know, what this is. And I don't think that there's anything on that. As far as talking about what people's desires are and stuff, we have had some meetings where this particular subject has gone on for over an hour because we have talked about, you know, what's the best way to cover all these assignments? And there's no reason that that, that we can't have that discussion in one meeting. Because I think people really need to, you know, do a little homework on what their desires are. You know, as the speaker said, you know, what are the schedules? Well, the schedules are listed, you know, in here. So you, you would have some amount of insight into that, you know, prior to even discussing it. So I, I just dragging it out into two meetings somewhat sets us up, you know, for not having someone to represent us in January. And, and I, and I just would, I would hate to see that. That's kind of why in the non-election years, we kind of moved it back to December so that we could have people hit the ground running in January. And there, you know, we, we have had situations where we've talked about them. I, I think that just, it sounds like council member Sparks, just the situation that you've had over the last couple of years was a little bit different, I think, because not a lot of the assignments changed. But certainly folks always could, could bring up, you know, I'm really interested in this subject. And as Damian pointed out, typically, you know, that's where we've ended up having people as the alternate so that they can kind of queue up. I know, you know, I, I, I sat as an alternate on quite a few things for many years because other council members had them, but I was still able to follow, follow the meetings, follow what was going on, get up on the subject. And then ultimately, you know, move into that primary position. But I, I'm, I'm all for us talking about it, but I think we can talk about it in, in one meeting and that's my thoughts.
All right. Who'd like to jump in the water next? Council member Ford? Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Landman. Right, having with council member Sparks been the new person a year and a half ago, I, I, it, it was sort of, I was not as prepared as I would like to have been for that meeting. And so I think trying to help newcomers be more ready for that discussion is a good goal. I also don't like the idea of, of, of taking it to the second meeting in January, just because I think we need to have the city represented at things. I wonder, one, one issue that's maybe particular this year, but, but might be a tradition going forward that would be useful is at the December meeting, to have the, some time when the, when the outgoing members can say a bit about their appointments and what that involvement has been and what it's been like representing the city on those, on those boards, what role they've played. I think that would be helpful for the new, for people considering those positions to actually hear from the people who have been representing the city in those positions, say a few words about them. And that could happen when the old council is still seated before the swearing in. And it might be a way to help, help newcomers think about, well, help all of us. I mean, we're, we're going to have some big holes to fill and that would give all of us an opportunity to think about it. And then in, in terms of sort of trying to get all the cards on the table about who, who's interested in what positions before we jump into, you know, okay, let's just start assigning to whoever jumps first. Whoever's mayor starting in January could think about and so. Vice Mayor Harvey could start thinking about a process that, that might give us, you know, maybe some process that would, would allow people to talk about their interests like you described prior to jumping into the actual positions and making appointments. And, and, and maybe when there's a lot of turnover, that's a standard process. But I, it, it seems tricky to me to, to navigate between trying to jump for a position versus getting all the cards on the table in terms of interests.
All right. Thank you. With that, let's see. Who else would like to jump in? Council member Moore, do you have anything to add at this point?
I don't know that I'm going to be adding anything that really helps. I think maybe if you did have a little bit of a discussion at the December meeting before the changing of the guard, indicating what the roles are and the time commitments on the meetings, that might be good. And then they can bring it up in January when they seat the full council. And, you know, it might give them a little bit of an idea there. But yeah, I don't know. I don't know that you need to start that and extend the meetings through the latter part of January out there. That's confusing enough. So yeah, I mean, unless there's some, some limitation to the discussion regarding what those committee assignments are and they're committed on those, I think that would be an appropriate discussion to have in December.
I'm sorry, could you explain that?
Sure. I know, unless there was some sort of limitation in reference to the Brown Act or something like that, that would preclude a discussion on there, I don't see the harm in that in December prior to the swearing in of the new council members. And then they can take that up in, in January, where they want to go.
All right. Good. I just want to make sure I understood you. All right. Let's see. Yeah, you know, I understand the frustration with, certainly as a new council member, probably even the second time and even multiple times, it's a complex process. And I understand certainly the frustration as a newer council member having interest in other maybe more desirable assignments that are filled probably with other council members that might have more long-term experience, either as a primary or even just stepping up as an alternate, which is an important thing to do. But I will say that those opportunities are about to open in a very large way in just a month or so. So with that, you know, I like the idea of is part of our last meeting is this council for us to have an agenda piece towards the end before we swear on the new council, talking about our time in our various assignments, what, what our experience has been, what advice we might be able to share, what we think they're really about and what people need to do. Our impression of what time may be important. I think that would be helpful. I, I really don't see a name though, honestly, for doubling this. The process is not that it will be. The information is all there in the packet. Any council member can and should read it thoroughly, prepare, and then participate fully, including doing the uncomfortable thing of saying, I'd like to do this, which is, we can all do it. There's only one problem is sometimes it leads to confrontation that we have to work through. And that's, that's always less than ideal, but it's okay. It's what we have to do. And the bottom line is any council member has the ability to ask any colleague or staff member about a particular committee. I think you could call right now any council, other council member, I could call any of the four of you and ask about your committee assignments. As long as I didn't lobby you regarding assignment, you can do that without breaking the Brown Act. And if you want to go further to lobby or talk about interest, you can do that with one selected colleague. So I don't see any real benefit beyond what we have now. I don't think, see where it has any transparency because we're all doing it in the public. But I do think, to my mind, it ends a potential less than ideal practice. It, this two-step process by its nature just seems to lead, perhaps in inverted, but it seems to lead right to Brown Act problems. And I'm, I'm just a no on that. I, I don't see that at all. And as far as splitting our meeting up, our last meeting as council and letting the new council start early. council rules do have reorganization at the end of the meeting. Now, obviously, there are rules, so we could change it if we wanted to or if it's just history. But I really don't see the need to do this because we can do this in one meeting. We can help by giving some extra introduction in December to this for my colleague, new colleagues, who I'm sure will be attending and watching. I know they will. And we can then avoid that problem of not having people in seats at the end of January just by doing it the way we've done successfully, transparently for years, have it one meeting. And yes, with a new group like this, is it going to take a little longer? Will the discussion be longer? Might there be some slight discomfort if two of you newer council members are interested, or four of you for that matter, are interested in something at the same time? But it'll be okay. It works. I remember our first few times doing this weren't as easy as the last few times because we're in the same position. But it's quite doable. So I think the intention of this is good. But I'm, I think my direction was I wouldn't want to go in this particular direction. But I am very open to the idea of having an agenda item probably before, next to last, before we introduce the new council and swear them in, to go over all this because I think there'd be some value of that to add to what the staff puts in the already really useful information that we usually have every packet for these things. So so that's my input. So we're asked to discuss it and provide some verbal direction to staff. Anybody have anything else they would like to add before? I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I'll try. I just see a hand from Councilmember Sparks. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to respond to comments from the Vice Mayor and the Mayor. Just to clarify, I understand that all the information about the timing of the commitment meetings, I'm sorry, the timing of the meetings, the time commitment, I understand that all of that information is available. As far as all the information being there in the packet, there's one really key piece of information missing, which is who wants the job? We don't know that until we come to the meeting and discuss it. And I do think it provides tremendous increase in, a tremendous increase in transparency to get all that out in the open, as Councilmember Ford put it up, get all the cards on the table. Because without the second meeting, there's discussions going on. They're not violating the Brown Act as, but there are discussions going on privately, on phone calls, and it would be so much better to just get everyone's desires out in the open. And then people can take some time and think about it like, well, she wants the same committee I do on this one. Maybe I could in the next meeting, maybe I could offer this versus having to really think on your feet and try to come up with a a deal or a compromise right in the moment. I just think it would be a better outcome for everyone if we had a little time. And I don't really see what the downside is to having a brief discussion at the end of the December meeting. I I just don't understand what the hesitancy about that is really. So thank you very much.
All right, Councilmember Harvey. Excuse me, Vice Mayor Harvey, it's getting raised.
No, no problem. I I think just to hit on the one last thing that Councilmember Sparks said, I I think what the mayor was objecting to is that it's the last meeting for that council. And what he was objecting to was to seat the two council members so they could be part of that discussion and have them have to leave in the middle of the meeting. As I understand it, is is that correct, Mayor? It's that having to have you get down so the new council members can come up so that they can be part of.
We've never done it that way, and I've never seen any other council do it. And granted, if there was a valid enough reason, I guess there's no reason you couldn't do it. But because we can do this in one meeting, I don't, I personally at least don't see the need. So so, yeah, that was my rationale. I do feel strongly.
Okay. And and as far as, you know, discussing what your desires are, I I I believe that it's important for people to to lay their cards, if you will, out on the table. And there's no reason that that cannot be done in one meeting. We've done that. We've done that before, you know. And sometimes, like you said, there are two people that may want a position, but we've always been able to talk through that. And it's important for us to talk to talk through that. And to go away, then then you also run the risk of, well, you don't really have anyone to talk to unless you then start talking to, as you said, you know, people on the phone. And as as the mayor said, lobbying for that. I I think it's more transparent for us to hash it out, much like, you know, we hashed out the urban agriculture ordinance. It took us a long time, but I think it's important for us to do that. And if it takes us an hour to do it or two hours to do it, then then so be it. I also didn't hear any objection by the mayor for us to have the outgoing representatives, as a matter of fact, everybody who has a committee assignment to go into a little bit more detail on that so you kind of have a little bit more information. But but again, you know, people, there's not just the information that's in the packet. All of these committee assignments, I would say, maybe not every single one of them because I don't know if the ledge committee puts out minutes. But all of them, you know, have recorded information that certainly people can go out and look at the meetings, look at the minutes. And again, even at this point, attend the meetings because they're all, they're all also Brown Act meetings that people can can follow. So, I mean, I I just think, just like any other item, we can work through it. And I think it can happen in in one meeting if people are, you know, willing to say, well, I really want to move in this direction or that direction. Or or as as was pointed out by Ms. Rivers, you know, sometimes scheduled things are are what drives it. And and I know that in the past, sometimes that's how Mark and I got some assignments because some of the other council members just weren't available during the during the day. And so we kind of had to, you know, help with that because people had, as you point out, you know, everyday jobs. So I think we can work through this in one meeting.
All right, I see Councilmember Sparks can do it, but I'd like to go. Since we're doing rounds in this, I'd like to go to Councilmember Ford and Moore first, if they have anything they want to add. So let me check in with them and see if either of you have something you want to add at this juncture. Please feel free to raise your hand. I'll wait just a second. If not, then I'll go to Councilmember Sparks one more time.
I think I I said my piece. I think we can work through it in one meeting. I like the idea of trying to bring people up to speed expectations of the different committees ahead of time. And I like that discussion at the December meeting idea.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion of the outgoing council, yeah.
Right, gotcha, gotcha. And that was a good idea. I agree. Councilmember Moore.
I would concur with Councilmember Ford on that as well. The only thing is you want to make sure that the information that they're giving you regarding the committee is accurate.
Well, I guess we'll have to do our best, that's for sure.
What are you implying there, John?
No, I'm implying that I had no idea that the continuum of care was that many hours involved in there and all of the moving parts. So whomever is interested in a particular assignment, it 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 would be very difficult to do while you're working full-time.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you for that. So we have some clarity there. Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead now.
Thank you. Well, I'm I'm hearing that this is going down in flames. What I would like to propose is that there be some process for folks to register their interest through a simple form that's distributed by the city manager so that in the agenda packet that comes out during our one meeting, we have a list already before us in the agenda packet of all the people who are interested in each committee so that we can read that and think about it before we come to the meeting.
But if you haven't gone through the presentation on it, read and talked about this stuff, will they be able to actually then indicate what they want? I thought the whole point was to have a more substantive back and forth to see who would be interested in what role.
Well, as I've heard from several folks tonight, all the information is in the packet about the about the meeting, about the about the the committees. So people can do their research ahead of time and register their interests. I think that would be better, a better way to do it if we had, if we knew who was interested in what coming into the meeting. It would make the discussion more fruitful.
So, yeah, it's always hard to speak lousy, Mayor, but it's a good tradition. I try to stick to it. And I'll just say, I appreciate the back and forth of this, but I don't see the need for it. And I don't see why, for this one thing, all of a sudden, we expect council members have to register ahead of time and and the city manager will be putting out. It's, we heard people say there was a concern that this puts us in a position, we have to think on our feet and that we might have to lay our cards out. And my argument would be, that's exactly what this job is. Yes, it does force us to think on our feet. We absolutely have to do that. Most of you are very darn good at it, in my experience, sometimes to my benefit and other times to my detriment, which are all very good. And it's the job. It's that simple. And I I'm comfortable with the way it's working. I I do believe it because I think it's completely tenable. And you will have a longer conversation. You will need to have a much longer conversation than we have in the past with the change coming. But I don't think personally, I remain convinced that there's any value in dragging this out or doing something as unusual as have everybody putting their names in ahead of time. This is one of the few times, though, I will agree, where cities that have a strong mayor that can actually has more power than just a in a city like ours, it would be nice if the mayor just came out and said, these are my proposals. And then you guys could talk about and see what you want. That's what happened to Susan and I the first time we were here. The mayor kind of just said, hey, we'd like you guys to take this, 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 and this. And being the new people, we said, okay. But since it's really a council decision, it has to be done. You can't really do that. That just puts the mayor in a difficult place. So anyway, I appreciate the openness. I think we've got some feedback for staff. One last thing, I see Councilmember Moore, your hands up. Is that a legacy hand or did you have one final thing you wanted to add?
There was just one more comment I was going to make on there. If you look at the, if you look at the assignments, there is eight assignments currently that will be vacated with the absence of the mayor and myself. And I don't know if Vice Mayor Harvey is going to look to change any of her assignments. But if she's not, then unless there's some sort of a coup, there's just going to be the eight positions or the eight assignments available. So I don't know that it's going to create that much of a significant hardship.
Well, I just hope nothing happens to Council Vice Mayor Harvey the next couple of years because otherwise this council will implode. Because it's important for us to be out in the county doing this stuff. I know it's easy for me to say as an older retired person. But this is one of, just as large as what we do here at the council, being out to protect the interests of this city and the people that live here as well as steer the direction of the county, which we do get to to some degree and some, sometimes. It's really crucial, so it is important. All right, so we are asked to discuss, which we certainly don't. I think we've given our directions to staff. So with that, I'm going to thank everybody for that. And we will now go, let's see, to item 12C. And this is a discussion about a proposal for city facility, a team building proposal, actually. And I believe we're going to have a presentation to start with city manager did.
Yes, thank you, Mayor members of the council. So there was a request from the, there's a request that I solicit proposals for a team building from a prior feature, agenda items, council meeting. And I reached out to all the city managers in Sonoma County to inquire about firms that run these type of team building efforts. Unanimously, all of the managers in the county actually said this one firm, Management Partners, is the recommended, who they would recommend, and many of them had direct experience with this firm. So I reached out to this consulting company. And I was, I I did try to clearly articulate the requested scope that it was team building. And the scope I received is attached to the packet. I did, I did have a follow-up conversation with them to clarify that this was team building. I mean, just primarily because I think, you know, some people's experience with team building, certainly my own, was kind of circa nineteen nineties type team building, which is sort of a different, a little bit different than what the scope had shown. So I wanted to make sure that this was, that this was team building, and this is what they do. So they did clarify that. The proposed, so the proposed scope, just in real, a real overview and what the scope is, is similar. It's similar to the annual strategic planning sessions that we currently run. They do do formal one-on-one interviews with city council members in advance of the workshop. And and part of the meeting, the public meeting, is dedicated to just working with the council members and making sure that they, you know, how to best work together as a team and achieve shared goals. So the normal strategic planning sessions that you all are used to kind of launches right into, you know, goals, kind of the goal frameworks as to what we like, and then going into, you know, kind of projects and sort of what do we think? You know, what's the priority of projects with capital P? So that's, you know, as you know, that's how we do it, how we have been doing it. But this scope would be a little different in the sense that that there would be time dedicated to kind of having the council members sort of, I I guess, state their goals and their philosophies and that sort of thing. Have more, it sounds like have more philosophical conversation and 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 hopefully get to understand where each other are coming from. So that's, that's where the scope goes that's attached. And as you can see, it's about sixteen thousand dollars. It won't require a special appropriation because we, if the council wants to move forward on this because we have had savings from the election, from canceling the election. And the scope is within the contract, within my contract authorities. So there's no specific council approval needed, but but direction is requested based on the suggestion that I come back with this proposal for further conversation. And with that, I will leave it there, but I'd happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, let's see if we have any questions to start off. Can I ask anybody to raise their hand if they have questions in anything in the presentation? I'm not seeing anything at the moment, so why don't we go to public comment and bring it back?
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Kay Rivers, please go ahead.
Hi. So I think this is a great idea as a member of the public. And I guess I can say as councilwoman-elect, I would very much appreciate the opportunity to have this team building, especially since, as you have noted earlier, Mayor in particular, four of the council members will be new. It does sound like a lot of money, but I feel like it could really be incredibly beneficial to us in serving our, you know, Kattari. And I'd just like you to please, I guess it doesn't need to be approved, but I'd just like to share my hope that this does go through. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. So we'll bring it back. So I think what I'd like to do is follow the same process and allow Councilmember Sparks to lead this off. I see your hand up, Vice Mayor Harvey. Would you mind if I let Councilmember Sparks lead off since this is her proposal?
No, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I I think that would be fair, so.
Thank you so much. Well, when I, first off, I'll say when I asked for this, I did not envision that it would come with such a large price tag. So when I saw that, I definitely had a little bit of sticker shock. But as I sat with it and really thought about it as an investment in having our new council work together really productively, I think it's worth the money, and I hope that you all will support it. Thank you.
All right. All right, now I'll go to the Vice Mayor.
So when I heard Councilmember Sparks first bring this up, you know, she talked about, you know, us getting to know one another and work with one another and getting used to one another and all of that. And to me, I was very surprised when I saw this as the proposal because this seems very much like something that would be used with a dysfunctional council that was not able to even set goals together because they can't stand to be in the same room with one another. You know, having side meetings. You know, having side meetings with someone to kind of. Figure out what each individual wants and then have that person, you know, kind of facilitate bringing all that together. I found that our strategic planning meeting. Last year where we worked diligently to fine tune some of our goals in particular. Around the equity and diversity, I felt that we worked very well together in order to let. That fine tuning happen naturally. I I didn't. Feel like we couldn't work through that together. So so I was a little taken back that I didn't feel like. We needed someone else, you know, doing that for us. As far as what I thought was the original intent was for us to kind of get to know one another a little bit better. You know, maybe there would be a better opportunity for us to do that in a more. Because of the Brown Act, the traditional team building, we we couldn't really do, it wouldn't probably work very well. However, the new mayors and council members does go through a lot of the topics around what council members do and things. And as a team, we could all go to that. As we discuss the different topics, then we could kind of talk about it, you know. Cause they have small table events, you know, with that. And then we would also have the opportunity then to, when we were not in. Sessions to kind of get to know one another more on a, you know, personal level. And and I would. Think that that might be a little bit more fruitful because I don't, I I don't think that we need. You know, help in setting our goals. I think we've done a really good job at it and and. You know, I I mean, Ben and Laura, you can weigh in, I guess, whether or not you, you. You know, like the goals we came up with last year, but I thought that we, you know, fine tune a lot of them and I thought we did a great job together. So that's my two cents on that.
Alright, thank you, Vice Mayor. Alright, I'm gonna look to Ben and John. Who's going to be the brave person to jump in next, please?
Uh, I'm happy to. I I didn't see the proposal at all as as aimed at a dysfunctional group. It it. I think. Sort of process work and outside facilitators with our our one. In in my work experience are super important at keeping groups functional and especially as there's a lot of turnover, I I. You know, four of, four of the five of us knew in the last two years will be a pretty significant. Turnover and this outside facilitation of kind of high level discussion of. Of challenges, key trends, the kinds of things that are described in the workshop, possible discussions. List in the proposal are are things that I think we could use. Some, some real time talking about, I understand we do some similar things in the annual strategic planning process. And I think this would feed into that and and help streamline or or shorten that process perhaps. To me, it seems worth, worth it to invest in this. At this time of a significant turnover. Acknowledging that we're a fairly functional group and not, this isn't our remedial program. This is a. Uh, how to, how to. Continue to be an effective council even as we integrate. As we lose a huge amount of institutional memory and experience. And. I said this at work when, when all, you know, a generation of my colleagues retired, like, oh no, now I'm supposed to keep this running? Like, so I I think this is a. To me, this would be a worthwhile expense. My my only concern is. Finding the time when the five of us are gonna be able to do all this together.
Well, I'm having to laugh, Councilmember Ford, at your description of us. On the positive side, it's a fairly functional group. But to be fair, in politics and in city council, actually, that is pretty high praise because that's. That's not bad. That is something.
Yes.
Alright, thank you for that. Let's see, who hasn't spoke? Councilmember Moore, do you have anything to add to this at this point?
I do. Although I don't really think it'll matter because I think the new council's gonna do what they wanna do anyway. I'm a little cynic. I I I find these team building exercises futile. I think they last for about ten minutes. And then people go on to do what they do. I think that we have a team right now. I think that the team. Although there may be differences, it is a team. And I think that as with any team, players come and players go. And and you learn to work with the players that you have. So I think it would be a waste of sixteen thousand dollars. It's all all part of my sensitivity training.
I I will miss working with you and counsel, Councilmember Moore. Oh, alright. So it's all, it's a, I always get that clean up here as mayor. So. Yeah, I think there's benefit, definitely, if there was a way. Not just our city council, any city council could actually get together the way normal human beings. Talk our interests. Our goals. Have some give and take away from the rigid and very stulted public process that we necessarily. Have to use for good reason. It would make our job easier, but unfortunately, we just can't do that. It's not allowed and for good reason. So this puts us in a position. That the only way we can get to know each other, get used to each other and know each other's interests. Is through working together as a council, through learning on the job. We kind of have to do that. You know, I look at this. And what I, when I read it, I don't see as a team building proposal. I understand this is a very well regarded and well referred firm. But it's just a former city manager. The slight in city managers, I think highly of them. And it looks to be mostly to be kind of a duplication of our existing. Or at least a partial duplication of our existing strategic planning process. The only thing that jumps out at me is something new is, that might be conceivably helpful. Is having somebody. Have individual interviews with council members ahead of time and talk about goals, interests and things and kind of have that together. Although, much like our previous. Conversation, that is something we should be able to do in the meeting. Any council member. Whether newly elected or not, should be able to sit down, listen to the presentation. Share their goals and thoughts, and if they have something they want to bring forth in strategic planning. They should be able to present it and see if they can sell two more council members, ideally more, to back it. But you know what I would suggest is kind of middle ground here, because I agree with a couple of you. Sixteen K for this, seeing as it just kind of duplicates what we already do, and I don't think it really does any true team building. I would suggest we just use the concept of using our own city manager to do this interview process perhaps. And add that as kind of a beginning thing. First up, bring in as part of. Next year's process for strategic planning. That would give some of what we want. It would perhaps be ideal, particularly for new, especially the newest two council members. To have that time with the city manager for the city manager to get to understand their goals, their interests. Because he's the, he's the one that can help with that, certainly, beyond the council. And then present that in a kind of generic way. Here's the interests I've heard from people and here's the topics that are rising around here from more one person. Something like that. I think there'd be some value in that. I think I'd be supportive of that, but at this point. I can't see spending sixteen K in this process unless I'm missing something. It's. Our strategic planning process or part of it, and I don't want to duplicate it. So just my thoughts right now. So. With that, I'll see if anybody wants to take another bite at the apple here, and I I would imagine, Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm gonna be extremely blunt for a moment. My experience onboarding with this council at the beginning of twenty twenty one was very negative experience personally. It was extremely stressful. I tried and failed to get on. Commission assignments that I was interested in. I had a very difficult time getting my priorities. And projects I was interested in placed on the list of projects. It was a confusing process. It was difficult. And I spent a lot of time thinking about. What could I suggest that would make this process better for the new council members? You know, what could we do? That would smooth things out and give them a more positive transition onto the city council. And I heard a lot about how we're a team. And we work well together. And to bring ideas that I've put a lot of time thinking about in. About how we can make this process better and to have them kind of down on a three-two vote. I I don't feel like I'm part of a team in that process. So I'm very disappointed that there's no support for these ideas.
I'm I'm very sorry to hear that. I'll just say, representing the group, and I think we all feel this way. It's not a personal thing and it's not against the concept of it, but I think. The argument you put forth, the value here and what they're able to provide at least in terms of this proposal just wasn't enough to sell most of us. That's the issue. I know you yourself looked at the costs of this and went, whoa. And I will say, I remember we did talk. On the phone about committee assignment. You were a brand new council member. And then the second, the last time, I didn't hear from you again and you didn't, there was nothing I heard you. Say that you wanted that you didn't get. Maybe you didn't bring it up, but. I would say, and not to be negative, but I would say that's on you. I know it's. It's uncomfortable to push for things, but. We do that. We have to do that. And if you want something, and you're gonna have so many opportunities ahead for things you'll probably want. It'll probably turn out better than health action, which unfortunately didn't turn out so good. That is all ahead of you. So I would hope you wouldn't sour on this group or this concept. Because certainly it hasn't soured on you because you're not getting support on some issues. So I I just wanted to share, this is a personal thought. So I see a hand up from the Vice Mayor.
Well, a a couple of things. And I feel bad, Laura, that that you, you know, got on health action and it went away, but just not that it'll make you feel any better or worse. But there over, over the years, I've been on quite a few things that. It seems like I just got on them and then they went away. So that that happens. And I tried not to take it personally, but but sometimes, you know, things run their course and and they're, they're not there. I I got to the point where I felt like, well, gee, I don't know if I want to be on anything because it might go away. Cause I had, you know, like three in a row go away. So. That happens. Just wanted to let you know that. You know, when I look at these, these questions that that are listed in here. I guess as a group, I feel like these are things that would be helpful to new council members. So if if as a new council member. How how would you answer? Tell us what the key accompan- accomplishments were of your city last year. Well, a new council member isn't necessarily going to know that, but it would be worthwhile for us to discuss that. So that, so that. That new council member could know what our accomplishments were, which I know Damian goes over there. And, you know, what are the challenges facing our community? A new council member may not know that, but others that have been involved may know that. And and Damian, you know, from a staff perspective will know that. I I just, some of these questions. I I'm feeling like we could discuss as as a group and and talk about them and. Get through it without having a separate person necessarily ask us all individually these questions. Cause that's what they're proposing is, you know, for for them to pull aside each one of us. And and ask us these things. And I think that there's benefit of us talking out loud. To one another as best we can, you know, with the, with the constraints of having to do this in in public. Cause I, these are good questions. But I don't know that a new council member is necessarily going to know how to answer these. And would like, you know, like, what, what are your norms? Well, I don't know how a new person would know, you know, what, what those, what those are. So I I think having the discussion is really worthwhile. And and pulling out some of these que- questions. And and, you know, maybe one of the things that we can do. To make it be more helpful is to pointedly ask. The new, new council members as they come on, you know. Did those goals make sense to you? Is there anything, you know, that you want to ask about them that we can, you know, further ask rather than just, you know, kind of. If no one raises their hand, then we move forward. I mean, maybe that would help if we, if we ask if. What we discussed made sense. You know, as a, as a way to help people. And I'm sorry that you, you know, feel that you didn't get assignments, but I. You know, maybe I'll go back and watch the meeting, but I don't recall. Um, any assignments being asked for. But, you know, I I'll go back and 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 listen to that. So I just really hope that people will, you know, will speak up. And, you know, this is an opportunity for us to to talk to one another and. And I think that having to talk through. Someone else isn't necessarily the best way, but I mean. It it's just a lot of money and and I'm, I'm having a hard time. I I hear what you're saying as far as we need to help people along. I I'm not necessarily sure that this. This will give us the benefit of what we want. But I'm, I'm not closed to it. Let's put it that way. If if that, if that's what everybody feels. That they need because they, they don't feel comfortable talking to one another, then maybe that's what we have to do. So.
I'll just jump in briefly for a second, since you've given me an extra idea, Vice Mayor Harvey. It's easy for us as council owners to sit here and come up with more work for the city manager. Fortunately, we get to get away with that. So since I already volunteered him, if the group was interested. Into folding in a interview process as described in this recommendation to the beginning. Instead of as a separate or or a secondary duplication of our strategic planning meeting. I don't see any reason, these sort of questions, perhaps deeper ones, that even the council could suggest questions they'd like to see. That might be helpful for him to work through with all of us. To get some consensus and collation and show majority minority reports and the various directions that we all as a group are interested in. You could do that as well, I think, and capture much of this perhaps without. Spending the extra, which I do sense some reticence and and do share. So just a suggestion, if the rest of the group was interested in that. We could ask Mr. Obit if he'd be willing to do that. Councilmember Ford, I see your hand.
Well, it it seems. Clear to me that that any action in this direction will will be left to the new council and not. This council will set it up for the, for the new council. But I I do want to just say, I think that the. The notion that that we're very much undervaluing the. The value of somebody from outside whose work is. Helping groups function well, as opposed to reading the proposal purely as a list of do this and do this and do that and well, we'll just have our own people do it. It just doesn't work that way when you're, when you're trying to do group facilitation and and. That kind of, that kind of work is an actual professional skill that is not. You know, not what we hired our city manager to do. And if we tallied up the kind of hours that would be involved in that work. It would be that much, it would cost that much of the city manager's time. So. I I think we're undervaluing the skills that some people have in group facilitation. But it, I don't feel like this discussion is gonna lead to guidance to proceed with the. With the proposal at this point, so I'm happy to let it go right now.
Alright. Anything else from anybody?
I was just gonna say through the mayor that Councilmember Ford's statements were right on the money.
Okay. Yeah, I recognize, I do agree, Councilmember Ford. Something where you can really work with people to do team building. I I just frankly didn't see much of it in the proposal. Looked pretty cut and dried, perhaps. There's more magic in here that's not just shared in the description of what the various activities. And proposed actions would be. I didn't see it. But that's, perhaps that's on me, but in my limited experience with these, the few times I've been through and seen it and looking at this, I'm. Not convinced. I'm not convinced that it brings that much value. But if it does next year and the new council wants to do it, they can do it. I don't, I remain at this point, I was open to being convinced if somebody had a good argument to spend the money on this. Because it's a lot of money, but it's that, not that big a lot of money for a city. But I just didn't hear anything that moved me. I'm sorry. So, Vice Mayor Harvey.
I, yeah, I mean, I guess what I would like to see is something more along the lines of, of team building. This, to me, you know, I, I understand what, what Councilmember Ford's saying. You know, having an outside person facilitate different things. You know, I, I've certainly been in plenty enough of those. The proposal that we got is, is all I have to, you know, kind of, kind of go by. And this particular proposal, to me, seems more like getting people to set up their strategic planning. And, and it's that aspect of it that I, I'm struggling with. If it was really more towards, you know, getting our, our, our group working together. If I saw more of that, I, I think I might feel differently. And maybe, you know, Damian can, can talk to them about that. Because I'm not, definitely not opposed to us, you know, you know, working with a facilitator. But I don't know that we need a facilitator to help us do our strategic planning. We may, I agree with you, may need to work with a facilitator to get us working together. But I don't know that this is necessarily, I guess, the subject matter to, to get that to happen. You know, maybe if the subject matter was different. Because this seems to be very, very pointed towards strategic planning, which I, I think we already have a process to. So maybe, you know, maybe Damian, you can get a little bit more, you know, from this. Maybe they've done some other things other than strategic planning. So thank you, Mayor.
Would there be an openness and would there be time while I ask Mr. Obit and the council kind of at once? I think you've heard the interest from the council. I think most of us need to be convinced that this is something that really would be team building and essentially just part of the strategic, that's our draft strategic plan. If we can get some feedback like that for the next meeting or something, and if I, we could be convinced it truly would help build team. Because it's clear to me for some of us at least, there would be value in that. I'd be happy to support it. Any, is there an interest in trying to take another spin at this from a staff perspective? Would we get anything beyond this, which I would agree, it does seem it's like more for challenged councils?
Mayor, I mean, if the council would like, I'd, I'd be happy to circle back with, circle back with this firm and take the feedback I got tonight and see if I can get a little bit of a different spin on the proposal so that it's more geared towards team building versus aligning strategic planning.
Certainly, you've heard from everybody, including the mover, and come back to us. Would that be acceptable to the rest of the council? I'm, I'm going to assume it is. If it isn't, please raise your hand and let me know. We can discuss it more. But I'd like to just give that direction. So we'll give the fullest opportunity. If we can do something that can be helpful, then I'm more than happy, then there's value in it. I'd be happy to support it. So we could at least try that. I'm not seeing any hands go up in disagreement. Mr. Obit, you willing to try that? So with that, I think we've had a chance to go over this, discuss it, and we've given some direction that will hopefully, hopefully be helpful in the long, I believe. We shall see, and maybe in the short term. Hopefully, maybe in our next meeting. Who knows? So with that, we shall move from that to item thirteen, which is our city manager's report.
All right. So thank you, council. Real quick, the SAFE team, as you, as you all know, because you approved the MOU change, but the SAFE team is expanding to SSU. And we're waiting on the final signed agreements back from Rona Park right now. And we, with this expansion, mobile mental health services will be, will soon be available for combined communities. And it's expected to expand from eighteen hours per day to twenty-four hours per day no later than February of twenty twenty-three. So continues to grow and that's a good thing. We've also been meeting with SSU and separate from SAFE, but looking at other ways that we can deepen our cooperation on a variety of areas. So, so it's, it's all looking, it's good, it's good things. Because SSU is, seems to be much more open to working together on regional issues more recently. Just a quick update on projects. I think you all know that the West Sierra Sewer Main project is underway. If there's been some saw cutting going on down the street and some traffic disruptions. But, you know, we're hoping that we're going to be done by the end of this calendar year. And we'll have a new sewer main that will be hopefully much less busy. As you saw in the financial updates, a lot of, almost entire, our entire sewer enterprise is dedicated, our operations is dedicated to paying our sewer treatment bill. So anything we can do to reduce the amount of rainwater and groundwater that goes to the sewer treatment plant is a good thing for, for our customers. Tonight, we, the council did award the Civic Center window, window replacement project. So the City Hall window replacement project was previously awarded. That's going on here. Probably over around Christmas time or so, we should have those windows. And then we are going to have a little bit of shuffling around when that happens. So our admin services department, which is kind of in the line of fire for the new windows, is going to be moving temporarily. So we'll, we'll put out more information on that when we get closer, but it'll be a temporary move. And that, and that can affect obviously customers, water, water, senior customers, payments or business licenses. So more information on that. We just opened up bids today on the Catati Park refurbishment. So I expect the council to see that soon. For a bid award there, it's a pretty extensive overhaul of that park, really, I think, the first since it was built. We are in November, later this month, planning to put out two bids for work. One is the Quick Strike Project, which is La Plaza and West Sierra. So that's going to fall on the heels of the Sewer Main. And then some street reconstruction project for twenty twenty-three, which is focused on the area around Myrtle. So road reconstructions. This is not the, not the maintenance project. This is the basically reconstruction project. So we alternate them back and forth, picking up some more roads that are in bad shape. So on the heels of all this, we're working on the Portal Street Water Main Replacement Project. So that's going to be probably there this winter, that we're going to be bidding that work. The housing element, that public review period's closed and we're sending those, we're sending the final draft up to HCD here any day now. And then we'll be getting those comments back and then we'll be taking it through an approval process of planning, commission and council once we get those comments back from HCD. Some events coming up. Holiday tree lighting on December second in La Plaza Park. A holiday shopping stroll on December third. Breakfast with Santa is December tenth. I know some of you have already registered, so get in there early because that sells out quickly. And so we have those things coming up. Our Candyland event that just passed for Halloween, we had thirty-seven businesses participate. And we served approximately six hundred children that afternoon, which was a huge success. I know I can tell you just on my own, from a personal perspective, I had very few kids come by my house for Halloween. So I think they all went to Candyland. So I don't know, maybe it's a post-COVID thing. Thanksgiving week camp, Catati registration is open and we only have four spaces left. This is Monday through Wednesday camp for the week of Thanksgiving. So parents can send their kids there when school's out, but they're still working. And there's all sorts of fun stuff to do there. It's eight to five P M. each day. As I mentioned, the, the annual holiday tree lighting on December second runs from four to eight. And this is going to be, include a lot of live entertainment, including the butter dishes, which have been there for many years now. Miss Sabrina's Dance Academy, music to my ears, North Bay Theater's own performance of A Christmas Story. And we're also going to have Santa there to light up the tree and visit with children for photos. And we should have crafts, free, free coffee, hot chocolate, cider. We're expecting carriage rides, so there should be lots of fun stuff to do down there. And then the next day, the Saturday, is the, is the downtown shopping stroll, which is run by the Catati Farmers Market Operators. And that's from eleven A M. to five P M. in our downtown. And it's a great way to shop locally, support some of our small businesses. You get great holiday gifts for your loved ones. And then the last thing, just I mentioned this earlier, but the Breakfast with Santa is filling up on Saturday, December tenth. It's a pancake breakfast, crafts with elves and visits with Santa. There's two sessions, nine A M. and ten thirty. And we only, we had quite a few spaces and we're down to, quickly down to fifty spaces left. So if anyone's interested, sign up quickly on that. We'll run out of space fast. With that, I'll leave it there and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, busy as usual, especially for this time of year. Let's check in, see if we have any questions from the council at this late hour. Or perhaps we're all city councilled out by the end of this meeting. I don't know. Not seeing any right now. So I'll say thank you, Mr. Obit, and jump next to city council member reports and see if anybody has anything they'd like to report out to the council publicly tonight. And I see a hand from Councilmember Sparks. Please go ahead.
Oh, I think Councilmember Moore's hand might have gone up before mine.
Go ahead, John.
Oh, thank you. Just a couple of things going on. The continuum of care, as you heard me bemoaning about. We had our meeting last, the end of last month, and we have a tentative agreement with a memorandum of understanding with the county so that each of the participants knows what their roles are and who they might be answerable to. So that's encouraging. We have another round of funding coming out from the state under the H hap four program of the homeless housing advocacy and prevention. And it's estimated, we don't have the exact figure yet, but it's estimated to be between eight and a half to nine million coming up to the county. So that's what's happening on that. We have a funding and evaluation committee meeting Thursday, in addition to the last one we just had last week. And then the other good news, the Sonoma County Library, Rona Park Catati Branch is now open on Sundays for the first time ever. And that's thanks to the Measure Y funding for that. So we had an open house there on Sunday with quite a few people coming in. Lots of support that is available Sundays for people. And the next CERA meeting will be after I'm off of council. So Mr. Obit will have to be covering that. But CERA's made a lot of progress and, and with the merging of REMIF and ParsAC into CERA, it's, it's really helped to spread that risk a little further. So things are going well in that regard. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good to hear. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Just a quick update. I attended the WAC-TAC meeting as alternate on, on Monday. And there was an update about the water supply that Lake Sonoma, well, this was prior to the rain this week, so I'm not sure now, but Lake Sonoma was at pretty much its lowest level since being constructed was what, what the phrase that I heard. And currently, there's also an issue where the transformer at the Potter Valley Electric Plant is out of commission currently. So PG&E is basically sending as little water as possible through that diversion, which means that Lake Mendocino is much more reliant on just natural flows to fill it. So we can expect it to see, to remain at a very low level. PG&E is not going to increase their transfers until Lake Pillsbury gets up to thirty-six thousand acre feet. And even then, they're not going to increase it as much as up to normal levels. So sort of dire predictions about the levels of Lake Sonoma and Lake Mendocino. One kind of fun thing I learned was that I did not know we had muscle sniffing dogs at Lake Sonoma. There was recently a ten-year celebration of our muscle sniffing dog program, which has been wildly successful, and we do not have muscles due to them. So that was kind of interesting. Right, that's all.
You missed a few years back, Councilmember Sparks, being on the RWA and hearing Mike McGuire kick that off with his, "Don't move a muscle" campaign. Justice, but it was pretty damn hilarious and got, got your attention. So I'm glad to hear that's still going. I'm actually glad to hear it was working because that was one of those things that, it's kind of funny, but actually when they talked about with this non-native species being ready invasive and coming in, it sounded like another dire thing. So that's good. All right. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share tonight? If not, I'll, I'll just have one thing. I think it's mostly good news. Sonoma Clean Power Meeting last Thursday. We did receive news that starting February first, Sonoma Clean Power rates will not only be at parity with PT, despite having a much cleaner power mix, but they're actually going to be back to our normal position of being lower than PG&E. So that, I think, is a very good thing. Will it make a huge difference in how much money we have to spend? Probably not, but it's still a good thing. I'd rather be giving a better product and doing it slightly more cheaply than not. And we're going to do this largely due to a succession of good contracts that we've had for a while. And then some regulatory success we've had working with CCAs as a group together throughout the state that have made us able to lower some costs that were being attempted to be assigned to CCA. So the combination of all these things have worked out for us right now. So that's not bad news to share. So with that, if there's no questions or no other comments from anybody, I'm jumping to item fifteen, which is public comment on non-action items. And let's see if we have anybody here. We do have attendee. I'll ask if we can open public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendee tonight. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. And I'll ask the city manager for item sixteen, if we have any information received after the agenda was posted. I know we did receive numerous emails on some of our agenda items today.
Yeah, just the information that went to the packet and, but nothing new.
Thank you. Well, before we adjourn, I'd just like to take a minute and thank everybody. Maybe it hasn't been always perfect, but you know what? We've had a long, difficult couple of years. This has not been an easy time for the world, the country, and, and our little neck of the woods either, even for this council. COVID Zoom meetings, and I, I mentioned bringing this up, seeing this, we're celebrating or at least putting out our last, hopefully last, long time, hopefully forever, Zoom meeting and going back to regular meetings starting at our next meeting. So I thank everybody for working through this, learning the mysteries of Zoom. And now hopefully we can get to a point where we can forget, forget some of those mysteries just a little bit. So with that, if there's no objection, then we're going to move to adjournment and be adjourned at ten nineteen. So I'll see you all at the next meeting. Good night.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all. Good night. Thank you.